I'm just gonna let folks know, I'm, uh, art, they did some, my, I'm locked out of the network. It's my, it's my, I'm locked out of the network. Uh, thank you, Chair.
I don't know, I don't know.
I'm, uh, oh, I'm looking for you. It's a lovely place.
Good morning. I will now call the April 6th, 2021 San Diego County Board of Supervisors, Regular Flood Control District, In-Home Supportive Services, Public Health Authority, and the San Diego County Fire Prevention District meeting to order. I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. Before I call the roll, I would like to note for the record that all five supervisors are participating via teleconference. As such, all votes will be handled by a roll call vote. Additionally, before we begin, any members of the public that wish to provide oral testimony during today's meeting, please review the instructions posted on the clerk of the board's webpage. I will remind members of the public that have requested to speak to wait to dial into the meeting until the item is called. With that, I will now call the roll. Supervisor Anderson?
Here.
Supervisor Lawson Reamer?
Here.
Supervisor Desmond?
Here.
Vice Chair Vargas?
Here.
Chair Fletcher?
Fletcher here. With that, we have a quorum, just a couple of housekeeping measures before we get into our invocation and pledge. We have a packed agenda today. We have a considerable number of speakers, which is a great thing, to have the public engaged in the business before the Board of Supervisors. We'll get through our normal consent calendar, prayer, pledge, and then we will go into public comment. We have a fair amount of non-agendized public comment. It's my intention after public comment, we will take the COVID update item first. We need to get our public health staff back to dealing with some changes surrounding COVID today and all that they're doing. After we do the COVID item, we'll work through the agenda and agenda order until approximately 12:30. Around 12:30, we'll take an hour and a half recess for lunch. We will reconvene at 2:00 PM. At 2:00 PM, we will take Agenda Item 19 with a time-certain presentation and public comment of 2:00 PM. After 2:00 PM and after Agenda Item 19, we will then resume working through the agenda and agendized order. At some point, we will have a dinner break. We will reconvene after dinner. It's my intent, we will get through the entirety of today's agenda in one continuous meeting, and I don't know if we will get through it today, but I do not think we should push Tuesday items to Wednesday. Public is here to participate on Tuesday, and so we will, we will go with that as it, as we, as we work through this. Having said that, we will now begin with the invocation and pledge of allegiance this morning. The invocation will be delivered by Rabbi Deborah Marcus from Temple Immanuel. Rabbi, welcome and thank you for joining us, and the virtual floor is yours.
Thank you so much for inviting me. I'm honored to be here. And so we begin with words of prayer and reflection. Mishabbirach avotenu ve'imo tenu, may the Holy One known by so many names who blessed all of our ancestral heritages, our parents, our lines of generations that we all come from. May you give your guidance and your blessing, your good counsel, your patience, wisdom, strength, and devotion to all of the members of our community and to this board of county supervisors today as they do the incredibly important work of presiding over our county, of making important financial decisions, of protecting the least among us, raising people up to a life of opportunity and blessing. May you inspire them with wisdom so that they may discern between the things that will help move our community forward and the things that so often divide us. May you bless them with patience that throughout an incredibly long day of agenda, voices, and meetings, they will stay with stout hearts, with open hearts, and hear the voices of those with whom they agree and of those with whom they disagree, that they will hear those many voices as you do, God, with love, with appreciation, and with respect. May you guide the hearts of all those who serve in positions of power and authority to be benevolent, to be charitable, to be gracious, and most importantly, to be genuinely kind to one another, that we may continue to build San Diego as a place of beautiful diversity, reflecting the incredible diversity that is a direct reflection of your divine creative impulses. May we see our differences not as divisions, but as reflections of you, God, you who are known by so many names, you who are known by so many people through so many pathways. May you inspire all of us to achieve and reach for our best selves. May you help us all to grow in our compassion and our wisdom. May you protect those who are unprotected. May you give strength to those who feel frail. May you give your blessings for health and strength to our first-line responders and our healthcare workers who continue to work to keep us all as safe as humanly possible throughout this profoundly terrible and frustrating pandemic. May you inspire our teachers to raise up the next generation with wisdom, energy, and creativity. And throughout it all, God, may you continue to offer your blessing to our county of San Diego, to all those who live there, to fulfill us all with good and open hearts. And again, on this day of such a long and challenging agenda, may you offer each of our supervisors the strength and fortitude that they will need to hear every voice anew, to be as fresh at the end of the day as they are at the beginning of the day, and to be filled with your love. Rabbi Hanina in the Talmud taught that we are to pray for the welfare of the government, and that is because the government is a reflection of all of the voices of the people who are blessed to live in this beautiful place, both documented and undocumented, both wealthy and in need. May they find answers here, may they find strength here, may they find resolution here, and may we find the creativity that we need in order to meet the challenges of the day with enthusiasm and with energy, understanding that this is a complex world that you have given us, and we will meet it with complexity and love. May this be done in your name by the many names that you are known. May we be blessed, and together we say amen.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. The pledge of allegiance today will be delivered by Fiona McNeil, a seventh grader from Roosevelt Middle School. Fiona, we are thrilled to have you join our meeting today and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you for having me. Please put your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Fiona. We'll now proceed to our proclamations. We have a number of proclamations today. First up, the first proclamation will be for the San Diego Green New Deal Alliance. And accepting this proclamation will be Malika Marsden, and I will be bringing this forward. April is the month of Earth Day, a holiday founded in 1970, which serves as a reminder of how fragile our planet is and how important it is to protect it. For this region reason, I thought it was important to honor a local San Diego organization working hard to fulfill the promise of Earth Day, the San Diego New Green Deal Alliance. The 2018 findings of the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change warn humanity with great urgency. We must slash greenhouse gas emissions in half globally by 2030, achieve net zero emissions by mid-century, and negative emissions thereafter. Failure to do this will cause catastrophic and irreversible consequences with working-class communities of color poised to suffer disproportionately in the greatest negative impacts. We know our communities cannot simply afford to wait for federal action. The San Diego region can and must lead our efforts locally to ensure a livable future. In June, July, and August of 2019, a wide cross-section of activists, community leaders, thought leaders, organizations, and representatives from elected officers got together to help shape the vision for the San Diego Green New Deal and chart the path forward with strategies and a work plan. From this start, the San Diego New Green Deal Alliance was born. The San Diego Green New Deal Alliance is working for a San Diego region that achieves zero carbon by 2035 through a fair and just transition for workers and communities of concern, the creation of good, family-sustaining jobs, and development of affordable, equitable, and inclusive communities powered by 100% clean energy. The coalition has been at an important advocate for many of our policies here at the Board of Supervisors, including our zero-carbon target, a more ambitious climate action plan, transforming our region towards environmental justice and equity. And therefore, it is my distinct privilege to chair, along with the San Diego County Board of Supervisors, on this sixth day of March 2021, to declare this day in honor of Earth Day throughout the month and make it proclaim it San Diego Green New Deal Alliance Day throughout San Diego County. With us today to accept this is Malika Marsden, Chair of the San Diego Green New Deal Alliance. Malika, we would like to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. On behalf of the 54 organizations and hundreds of individual activists that are a part of the San Diego Green New Deal Alliance, we are honored to have our work formally recognized with this proclamation. I'd like to acknowledge those that are a part of this movement, including the organizations and individuals who helped get this effort off of its feet in the early days, the member organizations, the steering committee, the working group chairs, and the hundreds of individual activists. This movement is truly something special. New partnerships are being made, new conversations are being had, and we've convened a powerful and diverse collection of brains and hearts to address the existential threat that is the climate crisis in a way that will truly make San Diego more equitable, just, and prosperous. While we are grateful to have April 6th be proclaimed San Diego Green New Deal Alliance Day, we are building the people power for a San Diego Green New Deal decade. Thank you again for this honor, Chair Fletcher, and the other Board of Supervisors.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a proclamation from Vice Chair Vargas. We'll present our proclamation honoring Rodney Fowler. Vice Chair Vargas?
Thank you, Chair Fletcher, and I think Mr. Fowler is actually joining us today. So I am so honored to recognize Rodney Fowler, Senior, for his continued commitment to working families in our county of San Diego. He's a native San Degan. He brings a very unique perspective as a labor leader, a public servant, and a San Degan with a well-rounded perspective on the intersection of civil rights and workers' rights. His career at the city of San Diego has spanned over 32 years, beginning in May of 1988, where he currently serves, where he currently still serves as the sanitation driver. His commitment to his colleagues earned him his election as president for ASME 127, representing the blue-collar workers of the city of San Diego. In addition to devoting his time to his union and community, Rodney and his wife Vanessa raised three boys, Rodney Jr., Rodney III, and Austin, in my district. And so we are all grateful for his contributions, and our region is stronger and more equitable because of his efforts. Thank you and congratulations on your retirement, Rodney. I hope that that doesn't mean that you're gonna go far away, that you're gonna still be around in our communities, but you get to rest a little. So we wish you many happy days with your family, especially your six grandchildren. Congratulations. I can hear everybody clapping in the back. The floor is yours, sir.
Hey, thank you very much, Supervisor Vargas. I appreciate the acknowledgement from yourself and the rest of the Board of Supervisors. I just want to make two corrections. I got 33 years with the city of San Diego, and my wife's name is Tyler. Vanessa is my daughter-in-law. So I can't, I can't have a mistake on the spouse. My spouse is here.
I don't know what happened. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, my spouse is here with me today, and she looked and said, "Who's Vanessa?" So you almost.
Oh, my gosh.
So I wanted, I wanted to thank, though, in all seriousness, the merit talk glory was out here today, along with Keith Maddox from the Labor Council, who is my neighbor in the next-door suite. But I wanna, I couldn't have done what I have accomplished in my life as a city employee and as a, as a union president here at ASME Local 127 without the support of my colleagues, my family, and certainly here at 127, my staff, Martha and Latisha. And good luck to Latisha today in the, in the assembly race. But I appreciate the acknowledgement, and I appreciate, I've worked with Supervisor Nathan Fletcher also. So I appreciate that. I know Nathan and Supervisor Nora Vargas, they know me individually, but I appreciate the acknowledgement and just appreciate your time. And my wife is also a county of San Diego employee, and she's been around for over 20 years. So I appreciate her and appreciate the success, and she'll be able to make it to retirement in a few more years from the county of San Diego. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rodney. Really appreciate your lifetime of service and what you've done for your workers and what you've done for the city. And, you know, we like you, Rodney, and we love your wife, because she's a county worker. So, you know, when it's her retirement day, we'll be back doing, doing this again. But our very, very, very best to you and your family, and all the very best as you move forward. So, thank you, Rodney.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Supervisor Lawson Reamer. We'll present our next proclamation honoring SDSU School of Public Health, and accepting this proclamation will be Dr. Orin.
Thank you so much, Chair Fletcher. This year marks the San Diego State University School of Public Health 40th anniversary. Public health is clearly a top priority for this county amid the pandemic and looking into the future. San Diego prepares almost 75% of the public health workforce in the county, including two of my staff and our very own Dr. Wilma Wooton, who is being honored at the 40th anniversary celebration on April 9th. This board talks regularly about the importance of workforce development. The School of Public Health showed us what is possible during COVID with the development of a public health student corps, placing an estimated 200 student volunteers at the county, as well as launching Communities Fighting COVID, a county-funded initiative to conduct culturally appropriate and language-specific contact tracing services. SDSU's partnership is invaluable to the county of San Diego and our communities through their mission to develop public health leaders, advance knowledge, and transform population health globally and locally through education, research, collaboration, and service to promote health equity for all. So on that note, I am honored to present the proclamation to the San Diego School, University School of Public Health.
Thank you. I take that as my cue. Thank you very much, Supervisor Lawson Reamer. We're really so appreciative of this proclamation today, and we want to thank the Board of Supervisors for this honor. We're really pleased to celebrate our school's 40th anniversary this week. It really marks decades of accomplishments and contributions on the part of our faculty, staff, alumni, and students. And really, it's being part of this greater San Diego community that's been so, so important to us, and we continue to look forward to many future partnerships in service to our broader region. I want to just say a few words about our school. The school was founded in 1981, and it's grown and expanded with what I think is exceptional programming. We have offerings in environmental health, in epidemiology, in health management and policy, and health promotion and behavioral science, and we provide education to undergraduate as well as masters and doctoral-level students. It's happening both in-person and online now, and you might say, "Well, maybe everything has been online for a while." But even once we return to our in-person programming, we will continue to do that. And the depth and quality of the work produced by and the education provided through the school have been well-recognized. Our school is currently ranked in the top 20% of public health schools and programs nationwide, and fourth in the top 25 masters of public health degrees. And we have been generating over $50 million in funding over the last three years in grants and contracts. And Supervisor Lawson Reamer mentioned some of the impact on the local health public workforce, with about 75% of local public health service county employees, alumni of our school. Supervisor Lawson Reamer also mentioned a lot of our COVID-related work, so I won't repeat it all, but we've, I'm really proud of us. We've risen to the forefront as both a community partner and leader during this time through consultation, health education, engagement, and response efforts. And this has been, you know, through, through very direct engagement with the county. We've been working on Communities Fighting COVID, which is this particular initiative to conduct culturally appropriate and language-specific contact tracing through the work of community health workers. And we've also been conducting COVID-19 testing and vaccine engagement with populations who have been highly impacted and may not have access to or receiving care. So I really want to thank you all for this great honor, and I'm looking forward to many, many years and decades of continued partnerships with our San Diego family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Lawson Reamer, I think you have our next proclamation as well for Dr. Aricela Nunez Alvarez.
I do, I do. And this is a proclamation for Dr. Aricela, but as well for a proclamation for Universidad Popular, which has been really a linchpin of so much of the organizing and education work in a big part of my district in Escondido. And as we, I just thought this was a very appropriate time to honor that work and honor the work of Universidad Popular and Aricela as we celebrate the legacy of Cesar Chavez. And it is really an honor to present and uplift the work they do in their, in our region. Universidad Popular was founded in 2012 under the leadership of Dr. Aricela Nunez, Maria Nunez, Ana Ardon, Lilian Serrano, Daisy Rosendez, and Flora Alvarez. Collectively, they have reached over 50,000 individuals through their citizenship classes, programs for the elderly, immigration integration, and after-school tutoring for the youth. In addition, through their outreach, they have helped over 2,000 individuals become U.S. citizens and elevate the importance of civic engagement. Universidad Popular serves as a trusted messenger in North County, and this pandemic has not stopped them. They are helping with food distribution events, access to personal protective equipment to frontline workers, and have been working hard to ensure farmworkers have access and information about the COVID-19 vaccine. The legacy of Cesar Chavez continues through the work of organizations like Universidad Popular. The youth and families they serve will carry the torch, and I look forward to seeing the impact they will continue to have in our community. Dr. Aricela Nunez Alvarez. Thank you for your leadership and the vision you bring to our region.
Muy buenos dias. Good morning, everyone. It is very appropriate that we are having the opportunity to accept this recognition from one of our farmworker communities here in North County. Aceptamos este reconocimiento de parte del equipo de Universidad Popular. Un equipo de maestras y maestros comunitarios que enseñan diariamente con sus corazones y con su mente. Estamos caminando el sendero que abrieron nuestros abuelos y nuestros padres. Cuando vinieron aquí a este país, llegaron en busca de una vida mejor. Y son familias como las que vemos aquí en este campo trabajando para sostener a sus familias. Honramos las enseñanzas de nuestras familias y ancestros y abrazamos el espíritu de lucha que representa el gran líder Cesar Chavez. Porque en nuestra fuerza de levantarnos, de ponernos de pie, reclamamos nuestra humanidad y el derecho de vivir plenamente aquí en este país. It is very appropriate that we have the opportunity to accept this recognition today from one of the farmworker communities here in North County, where Universidad Popular is helping to vaccinate hundreds of essential workers in collaboration with CAL FIRE. We accept this recognition on behalf of dozens and hundreds of community leaders and organizers who are teaching every day with their hearts and with their minds. We, as organizers and teachers, are walking the path that our parents and grandparents forged for us when they first arrived to this country, looking for a better life. We honor their teachings and their wisdom because we believe that honoring that is the key to our survival and our people's continuation. We embrace the spirit of struggle, of lucha, that our leader Cesar Chavez taught us because we believe that being able to stand up for ourselves and for our community, and by doing that, we reclaim that humanity and the right to live full lives in this country. Muchas gracias por este reconocimiento. So thank you so much for this recognition. And we look forward to continuing collaboration for many years to come. Muchas gracias a los supervisores. supervisores.
Thank you. Thank you. Our final proclamation today will be given by Supervisor Jim Desmond honoring Jared Diaz Barrios, the 2021 San Diego County Youth of the Year. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate this opportunity to honor Jared Diaz Barrios. As you mentioned, he is the San Diego County's 2021 Youth of the Year. Youth of the Year has been the Boys and Girls Clubs of America's premier recognition program, celebrating the extraordinary achievement of club teens. So Jared is a team member of the San Marcos Boys and Girls Club. He was selected the Youth of the Year in San Marcos. He was also named the San Diego County Youth of the Year on March 9 of this year, and will move on to represent the county in the 2021 California Youth of the Year competition later this month. Jared attends Mission Hills High School in San Marcos. He has a 4.0 grade point average. He's a play setter, he plays setter actually, on the junior varsity volleyball team, and is active in the advancement via individual determination program, AVID. He is active in the Boys and Girls Club Leadership and Training Program, and he's also in Keystone, which is a national Boys and Girls Club program encouraging community service. Jared spends up to seven or eight hours a day at the Boys and Girls Club to study, to work on school assignments, to meet with friends, to play soccer, tutor other students. He's also completed more than 200 hours of community service in the past year, helping to serve five, over 500 meals daily at the Boys and Girls Club of San Marcos during the COVID-19 pandemic. He's worked on fundraisers to aid fellow clubs in Los Angeles that were impacted by recent wildfires, and partnered with other organizations to feed and clothe area residents in need. Jared has his sights set on attending UC Irvine as a criminology major and aspires to a career as a K-9 officer, preferably with the San Diego County Sheriff's Department. The County of San Diego is committed to recognizing and honoring those individuals who are dedicated to the best ideals of public service, and Jared Diaz Barrios is one such worthy individual. So now today, the San Diego Board of Supervisors hereby commends Jared Diaz Barrios for his commitment to community service and to the extraordinary achievements, and do hereby declare this to be Jared Diaz Barrios Day throughout San Diego County. Jared, we've got a beautiful proclamation that we will get to you. We will deliver to the Boys and Girls Club of San Marcos. If you'd like to say a few words, now would be a great time.
Yeah. First of all, thank you. I was not expecting that. I'm very shocked right now. Some kind of loss for words, but I really appreciate this. It means a lot. Definitely, my community keeps me going. I feel like that's my biggest motivation. That's the main reason for why I do it, my school. Yeah, I'm lost for words. Thank you.
Well, Jared, you've done a phenomenal job. You're an exemplary team, a great example, I'm sure, to your peers, and your family is probably very proud. Good luck in the competition for getting California Youth of the Year. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Desmond. And Jared, congratulations for all of your hard work. It was great to have you join us this morning. Next on the agenda is non-agendized public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Supervisors on subject matters within our jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda. The only action the board may take is a referral to the Chief Administrative Officer. Reminder, according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the allotted time to allow for facilitated interpretation. At this point, I'll ask the clerk to call forward our non-agendized public speakers for today.
Thank you, Sheriff Fletcher. We have 22 requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda. Any members of the public that have requested to speak during non-agenda public communication, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions provided to you. As a reminder for the callers, if you requested to speak on a specific agenda item, please hang up and call back when the board begins discussion of that item. We will be calling speakers by the last four digits of your phone number. You will hear a notification that your call has been unmuted. You will then need to press star six to unmute your phone. Each caller will be asked to state their name for the record. You will have two minutes to address the board. You will hear this sound when your time is up, so please conclude your comments at that time. Now, I would remind the public speakers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. Erin, if you could please identify the first caller.
Thank you. Our first caller is 6685. 6685.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, am I on?
Yes, you may proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, supervisors. My name is Barbara Campbell, and I live in Carlsbad. I'm speaking today about the 20-year McClellan Palomar Airport Master Plan. There's a problem with the airport plan. It's a build-it-and-they-will-come plan. At first, the county was selling the plan for business issues, then pivoted to safety as a reason toward the expansion. In both cases, the data simply doesn't support the county's positions. The newest angle is that the FAA is requiring the county to expand. Again, the data doesn't support this most recent claim. Palomar Airport is a B-2 airport, and the few larger jets that fly in and out of there have been doing so for years under pilot discretion with no issues. What has changed is that a handful of corporate executives are lobbying the county to lengthen the runway so they can fly in and out of Palomar on their huge corporate jets with full tanks of fuel and not have to stop for gas. Yes, the county is requesting to expand Palomar Airport so a few executives can fly directly to China without having to stop for gas. This is real. We know those jets can easily fly out of San Diego without a dime of taxpayer money, but they simply don't want to. Keeping Palomar Airport a B-2 makes sense, financial sense and environmental sense. It better aligns with this board's publicized priorities. It's more in line with the county's commitment to meet zero emissions by 2035, more in line with Sand Egg's Big Five moves, and certainly more in line with the goals of economic justice. Spending our tax dollars to benefit our constituency, not funding wealthy jet owners whining about a pit stop for fuel. There is no public benefit to this expansion. There's simply, there's a very simple solution, and that rests with the five of you. Please invalidate this master plan. There is a prepared plan option to keep the airport as it is, a B-2. It was one of the original seven or eight options presented to the former Board of Supervisors. Please invalidate this current master plan.
Thank you, ma'am.
And please instruct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is 5033. 5033.
Hi, my name is Gretchen Gold. I'm with Reopen San Diego, a nonpartisan coalition of passionate and concerned citizens from every walk of life that support and follow the U.S. Constitution, the data, and the science. I'm asking the Board of Supervisors as public servants who work for us to show the data that proves San Diego County is currently in a local state of emergency. Number one, where is the evidence of a current threat of a pandemic or epidemic in San Diego County? Number two, how is the response capacity of San Diego County's healthcare practitioners currently being overwhelmed? Number three, where is the evidence that the actual numbers of deaths from COVID as opposed to with COVID are more than the worst seasonal flu? You cannot keep San Diego County in a perpetual state of emergency as is unlawful. A state of emergency is not to last more than 60 days. All of the orders that were created under the state of emergency in 2020 should have expired months ago, including, but not limited to, stay-at-home orders, social distancing, wearing of masks, and the closing of businesses and schools. What are the lawmakers doing to address this invalid and unlawful state of emergency declaration? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 7613. 7613.
Good morning, county supervisors. My name is Becky Rapp. I'm a concerned parent and community volunteer. I'm grateful the county has extended the deadline on the proposed marijuana ordinance. It's extremely evident that planning groups and staff need more time to understand the ordinance and give educated recommendations because they were caught totally by surprise. One very disturbing aspect of the ordinance regards consumption lounges. This is an unfamiliar idea in the county, and I wonder why the county would pursue this aspect of the marijuana industry without knowing the real negative consequences it will have on communities, particularly rural areas of the county, areas with unlit, windy roads, and narrow blind corners, roads where people often speed and traffic accidents are frequent. It has been shown that you cannot smoke, vape, or ingest marijuana without getting high. Do consumption lounges promote drug driving? And is this message what you want to send to your constituents? I live right outside of Ramona and frequently visit with my children enjoying hiking and camping. Ramona has rural windy roads and are often unlit. My children have driven back and forth on Highway 67 when going to work, as well as attending activities with their religious youth groups in Ramona. It's no secret that Highway 67 is a common place for accidents as it's narrow and people tend to drive fast. Some shocking statistics were just published according to the National Safety Council. Motor vehicle deaths in 2020 estimated to be the highest in 13 years. An estimated 4.8 million additional roadway users were seriously injured in crashes in 2020, and the estimated cost to society was $474 billion. This is staggering, especially when you consider last year, we saw a drastic drop in miles driven due to COVID. Bringing consumption lounges will not alleviate this problem. I ask you to please reconsider the catastrophic consequences that will come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 9885. 9885.
Good morning, supervisors. This is Lori Saldana calling in, and I wanted to ask the supervisor to take some action this month on behalf of the sexual assault awareness issues. April is National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and here in San Diego, we still have some of the highest rates of untested sexual assault evidence kits, both at the county and the police level in the city of San Diego. So to bring more awareness to this issue and the importance, especially in San Diego, of having more survivors of sexual assault, request justice in the courts. Make sure that the kits that they go through, the challenge of providing to the police department are adequately tested, the DNA is identified and submitted to the national database. I think that's something that the Board of Supervisors needs to review. County District Attorney Summersupson, three years ago, promised to take some of these testing issues to a private lab, and I don't believe there has been a recent update on the status of those test results. So this would be the ideal time to do it. It's been three years since she made that commitment. So I want to encourage the board to invite the district attorney in to provide an update on the status of the results of this testing that she offered to pay directly from her department to provide. So thank you very much for recognizing the trauma that the survivors of sexual assault are still living with when they're not able to gain access to justice in the courts because the evidence kits are not being adequately tested. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 4253. 4253.
Hello?
Good morning.
Hello. Good morning. I can go inside to church. I can go inside to Walmart. I can go inside to a movie theater. I can go inside to a restaurant with 100 people. So why can't I go inside to a Board of Supervisors meeting? I can also drive up to Orange County, Riverside County, and San Bernardino County and walk into their open public Board of Supervisor meetings. I can watch the public speak in person on a video recording of their meeting, but I can't do those things in my own county. We elect our supervisors and we pay their salaries with our tax money. We need to be able to address them face-to-face in person. That is the spirit of the two open public meeting laws in California, the Bagley-Kean Act and the Brown Act. So I say to my elected leaders, the emergency is over. Let us in. We won't bite. Let us in. Don't zoom out of democracy. Let us in. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you could please state your name for the audio record?
Diane Ake.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 2153. 2153.
Good morning. This is Kelly McCormick. I'm parent and director of a youth mentoring program, where part of our mission is to empower students to choose a drug-free lifestyle and cultivate healthier ways to deal with difficulty. This job has become more difficult with the onset of commercialized marijuana. In numerous surveys, including the California Healthy Kids Survey, the number of students who view marijuana as harmful has significantly declined in recent years. The lower perception of harm leads to greater use. Is this any surprise when marijuana businesses are endorsed by government leaders and presented as a harmless way to have fun, or a safe way to cure your ills with almost no attention paid to the realities of this drug and the industry that profits from it? I remind you that substance use disorder is characterized as a pediatric onset disease. 90% of people with substance use disorder begin smoking, drinking, or using other drugs before age 18. It's more than a habit. Neuroscience shows that the brain is still developing until age 25, still rewiring and creating new circuitry. The artificially high levels of dopamine produced by marijuana reinforce the neural pathways for craving while depleting the brain of its ability to create dopamine naturally. Today's marijuana is a much different product than in years past. It is genetically modified to produce a much higher level of THC, often distilled into a concentrate that can be 90% pure THC. That's what's going into vape pods. According to the county's own data from 2019, marijuana was the primary drug of choice for adolescents who entered county-funded treatment centers. In today's meeting, you'll address three top priorities, including the homelessness response, mental crisis team, and behavioral health continuum of care. Marijuana use can exacerbate all of these problems, whether it's addiction or a mental health crisis brought on by marijuana use. Discouraging marijuana use would be a better strategy.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 2839. 2839.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thanks for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Frank Sung. My wife and I are 20-year residents of Carlsbad, part of Supervisor Jim Desmond's District 5. I am asking you this morning, as a board, to keep McClellan Palomar Airport as a B-2, Baker II Airport. During the campaign season, leading up to the November 2018 elections, I was part of a group of four citizens who met with candidate Desmond. It was on Friday, September the 28th, at the City of Carlsbad's Crossings Golf Course Restaurant. At that meeting, you said that you opposed the county's plans to expand the runway and make the airport a D-3, a Denver III airport. You agreed that an expanded runway, matching the length of John Wayne in North San Diego County, was not needed, or feasible, or in the best interest of the residents in the area. So we left the meeting feeling assured of your position. The Palomar Airport Master Plan passed on October the 10th, 2018, three weeks prior to the 2018 elections. Before any of you, the current board, were elected to the dais. It was Bill Horn's parting gift to himself. The D-3 option passed against the recommendation of the staff, against the recommendation of the Palomar Airport Advisory Committee, and without the support of the City of Carlsbad. So my question now to Supervisor Desmond is, will you take the lead, and can we count on you to maintain Palomar Airport as a B-2 airport? I'm asking all of you as a board to please invalidate the current master plan and reinstate the B-2 option. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 4592. 4592.
Good morning, chair, fellow supervisors. Catherine Lippett here. I'm calling in to draw attention to the importance of sound public policies and good government. History shows us how wrong policies can go, being harmful and destructive and undermining faith in government. The board's goal to achieve equity is evident. It's mentioned 32 times on today's agenda. In theory, it's a laudable goal, but applied as the board intends it grants privilege to one group over another. That's neither fair nor equitable. Unfortunately, as a privileged group, you are insulated from policies like this one, socially equitable campus future. Though it appears to restore social justice to one group, it deprives- Though it appears to restore social justice to one group, it deprives another. The county has inflicted past injustices and treated the unincorporated communities inequitably for years. Cloaking this policy in political rhetoric doesn't alter the fact that it continues that travesty. As a graduate of San Diego State University School of Public Health, I applaud the county's public health priority claim. However, however, this plan ignores voluminous data and evidence of the evermore potent and addictive products that risk lives and undermine public health and human capital. The marijuana industry's political influence has corrupted and blinded too many political electives to the dangerous power it wields. This distortion was evidenced when it was categorized as an essential business while institutions that educated our children and fed our spirits in religious services were not. The industry believes, unbelievably, whines about ensuring its ability to survive and profit while it spent twenty-one billion dollars on lobbying. No longer renters, they purchase massive facilities displacing entities that provide valuable community services. Elected seek their counsel before authentic community voices. The public is paying the biggest price for your choice to support marijuana. Please remember the motto by Virgil that graces the west side of your county administration building. The noblest motive is the public good.
Thank you. Our next speaker is one four two five, one four two five. One four two five, please press star six to unmute yourself. If we don't hear from you when your number is called, we will come back to you. One four two five. If not, we'll move on to one four three six, one four three six.
Good morning, Chair Fletcher and County Supervisors. My name is Tara Hammond, and I'm here today to announce that the Climate Defenders Action Fund, League of Conservation Voters San Diego, and Hammond Climate Solutions are launching the San Diego Climate Report Card. We are in a climate crisis and rely on elected officials to make policies that can create a just, livable future. We believe it's important for San Diegans to be informed about how their representatives are voting on climate, and our climate report card will help educate the community. We are tracking all climate-related votes for the county supervisors, as well as San Diego City Council, and we will release the results at least once a year, starting Q-one, twenty-twenty-two. I have sent you all an email with this announcement, and feel free to let me know if you have any questions. Thank you so much. Have a great meeting.
Thank you. Our next speaker is one eight two two, one eight two two.
Good morning, Supervisors, this is Peggy Locker. I work in youth prevention education, and I'm here today to share what I've read and learned about Colorado's experience with widespread marijuana commercialization ten years down the road. This is especially pertinent as we celebrate Earth Day. Concerned about documented horror stories of harm to children and the environment from new hyperpotent marijuana, Colorado legislators are desperately seeking to regulate the potency of THC and to pull back on commercialization. We expect policymakers making decisions as critical as marijuana commercialization to be fully informed of potential harms. But perhaps that's naive because even the man who authored the bill leading to the big green rush in Colorado says he couldn't have anticipated today's unwanted outcomes. Robert Corey, a Stanford-trained lawyer, says he deeply regrets writing that bill and calls the outcomes of legalization shameful, says it hurt people, and Colorado is not safe as a result. Behind talk of unsubstantiated medical benefits and cries for personal freedom that led to commercialization, Corey says lurks corporate crony greed that takes control. This industry has modified plant genetics to increase THC potency to the degree the plant is no longer natural. It boughs our planet with chemicals and wasteful growing systems, harms the poor and children, uses massive amounts of energy, and is destroying the environment. These undesirable results were not anticipated, Corey said, when creating a new industry in twenty-twelve.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Our next speaker is one one zero four, one one zero four. One one zero four, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good morning, Chair Fletcher, fellow supervisors, county staff and residents. My name is Jerry Hall, and I serve the community in a number of capacities, mostly in the area of mental health and substance abuse disorder issues. I share this and many related perspectives on my blog at bhavrehab.com. I'm speaking because I believe it's of the utmost importance for supervisors to be well-informed that their Behavioral Health Advisory Board, or BHAB, which acts in an oversight role of our Behavioral Health Systems Department, has been unable to accomplish its state mandated duties, and that appears to be by design. I believe one consequence is the number of behavioral health crises you are currently wrangling within the county. These crises are exacerbated by systems and practices that have continued underserving and marginalizing especially vulnerable communities of people of color. One of the BHAB's most important duties is to review and approve the BHS plan to ensure a wide range of stakeholders are meaningfully engaged in the planning, budgeting, and outcomes review processes throughout the year. However, we've been unable to do that as well, largely due to, you know, the inability to communicate with the with the BHS system. BHAB members include those with lived experiences, mental health consumers, and family members, and those that are subject matter experts. In my opinion, the BHAB needs members with expertise in epidemiology, data governance and systems, budgeting and finance, and other systems of process design, as well as marketing and communication. I urge you supervisors that are replacing current board members to be mindful that this is a very important advisory board in that it is mandated by the state and and it has the duty to to ensure that a department spending hundreds of millions of dollars is doing so according to the law. And I do not believe they are doing that yet. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is nine eight eight seven, nine eight eight seven.
Good morning, Supervisors, my name is Carol Green. I'm here this morning because of my volunteer work throughout the county with parents regarding education, public health, and safety. My observation is that public education is important for parents regarding the issue of public health, including misinformation and perceptions around marijuana. Marijuana policies and businesses have become a divisive issue throughout the county because of the influence that they have on youth and the impact to neighborhoods and businesses where they locate. Having marijuana businesses in the county creates confusion for parents trying to educate their children regarding what is most important in their children's choices regarding their long-term success. Over the past few months, consideration of marijuana commercialization is concerning to me and many, many parents throughout the county. Remember, there is a big difference between commercialization and not locking up youth. I respectfully suggest that you take more public input and education. I also respectfully request that the supervisors are educated by doctors and public health officials, not just those that stand to profit from the marijuana industry. Please find ways to protect our youth. Our parents in the county need this. They are counting on it. Unfortunately, I know firsthand the trauma that comes with families that are rocked by marijuana use, and I also know firsthand what it is like to lose those most precious assets of all, our children, through the mental health crisis created by marijuana. Again, I advocate, on behalf of all children and families in the county, please take the time to seek answers from the public and take your time before you make an ordinance that is detrimental to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is three eight zero zero, three eight zero zero.
Dear Board of Supervisors, my name is Barbara Gordon. As a county resident, we need to know the real costs and consequences of marijuana businesses. As San Diego faces an unprecedented overdose crisis that is being exasperated by the pandemic and economic turn-down, is now really the time to consider another addictive drug? Given the challenges facing our communities right now, it's increasingly important to speak up in an effort to help shape the future of our children. I'm an advisor for a Hispanic youth group, and I have seen the negative impacts our youth are experiencing with lack of resources. With limited in-person school in their lives right now, they are without the benefit of structure. I am concerned the issues our youth are experiencing with mental health and substance abuse could lead to a lifetime of problems. It's important the county focuses their effort on assisting our youth and their families with education and job training opportunities, and not focus on permitting marijuana businesses. Now is not the time. As a policymaker, I am concerned you are allowing the marijuana industry to influence your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is six five nine eight, six five nine eight.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Judy Strang here. I want to thank my supervisor, Tara Lawson Reamer, for recognizing the San Diego SDSU School of Public Health, yay, forty years. We also are celebrating another public health anniversary, if you will. It was just fifteen years ago that a federal judge announced, in a seventeen-hundred-page opinion, a scathing ruling that sort of reverberated across the country, and she said, "Over the course of more than fifty years, defendants lied, misrepresented, and deceived the American public. Defendants have marketed and sold their lethal product with zeal, with deception, with a single-minded focus on their financial success, and without regard for the human tragedy or social cost that success exacted." She was, of course, referring to the tobacco companies and their trade organizations, which had misled American consumers about the harmful effects of smoking cigarettes and the truly addictive nature of nicotine. This came after the culmination of over fifty years of investigations where researchers identified dozens of cancer-causing chemicals in cigarette smoke. And in fact, it came after fifty years of public health advocates questioning the advertising that said, "Smoking helped with nervousness and reduced weight," when instead it was highly addictive and compromised health. It also came after countless lawsuits had been brought forth in behalf of people whose lives were compromised, and sort of culminated when the state attorney general sued the federal government for help with Medicaid for those of their citizens who's lost their life because of smoking and what eventually became vaping as well. So we ask, are we looking at enabling marijuana businesses in our county? Are we denying the years it took before?
Thank you. Our next speaker is five five three seven, five five three seven.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, my name is Casey Strang. I'm the Executive Director of the San Marcos Prevention Coalition, Working to Prevent Youth Drug Use. It seems concerning to us that this push to open up marijuana growing and manufacturing and selling in the unincorporated area has not put enough focus on the public health and safety ramifications, most importantly, how this change will affect our youth and families. Today's marijuana is not yesterday's marijuana. The majority of the products now sold by the pot industry are solvent-extracted processed concentrates of the chemical THC. These concentrates now average about seventy percent and even higher into the nineties. These concentrates are not plant material rolled in a joint. They are produced by soaking marijuana buds in chloroform, butane, and propane. These chemicals extract and concentrate the THC into a waxy or oily form. This highly potent concentrate gets vaped, smoked from a pipe or a vaping device, and it's baked into cookies, drinks, and candies, which are all very appealing to our youth. This is important because the world-renowned medical journal, The Lancet Psychiatry, has published several studies finding products with only fifteen percent THC or higher triples the risk of psychosis. There is clear science connecting high potency THC pot products and psychosis. Last year, the Journal of American Medicine concluded that high potency THC products were associated with a significant increase in addiction and mental health disorders. Let's remember, our eighteen-year-old high school seniors have access to these highly potent products. They can walk into any pot shop day after day and buy these products, or just call and have it delivered to them, just like you would a pizza. This is likely part of the reason that eighty percent of the localities in California prohibit these pot shops, these manufacturing facilities, and grow sites. They have grave concerns with the access of youth to attractive products.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is seven two seven seven, seven two seven seven.
Good morning, my name is Diane Grace. As a mother and grandmother, I want to share with you some information on the recent court ruling which bans marijuana advertising on billboard along all interstate highways throughout the unincorporated San Diego County. A public interest lawsuit filed in two thousand and nineteen by San Luis Obispo resident Matthew Farmer, a father of two, argued that the billboards were illegal under California Proposition Sixty-four and wrongfully exposed his children and millions of others to cannabis advertising. His attorney stated, "This ruling is a major triumph on several fronts. It's a victory for all Californians over the desires of unelected Sacramento bureaucrats who illegally tried to put corporate profits ahead of children's health. This is long overdue, and the sooner the billboards are removed, the better." While on car rides as a child with my family, the best way to ease boredom was to see who could read the billboards first. I also did this with my grandchildren and now grandchildren. Marijuana is not the message people want to see on billboards, and certainly not a healthy message for children to see while in a car or anywhere. Billboards and other in-your-face advertising are one of the unfortunate consequences of permitting marijuana businesses. This may be one of the reasons why only twenty-two percent of municipalities statewide permit them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is six thousand, six zero zero zero.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, this is Dean Lapato. I want to talk about some of the things that this lockdown is doing. I have a friend who was a Tyler, and he got a huge fine just for doing his work, and he can no longer support his family. We've had a lockdown for a long time, and we'd like to know when that lockdown is going to end and how it's going to end, or if it's just going to be a lockdown forever. We'd also like to know when you're going to open up the board meetings to the public because we're all on the same side. We all want to make San Diego a better place. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is seven eight seven two, seven eight seven two. Seven eight seven two, please press star six to unmute yourself. Either seven eight seven two or one, one four two five.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good morning, Supervisors. My name is Allison Hartman. I'm calling today as a representative of Reopen San Diego, a concerned coalition of over fifteen hundred citizens and business owners in San Diego County, reopen@reopensd.org. Earlier this year, Florida hosted the Super Bowl with a packed stadium. It did not lead to increase in deaths or cases as predicted. Kids in Florida get to go to school full-time, businesses are open with no restrictions, the quality of life flourishes with no impact on mortality discernible. I want to first reiterate the point made earlier, asking, where is the state of emergency in California? We have similar death rates per capita as Florida, but we have the most draconian restrictions, which are harming our children, our businesses, and our citizens. A state of emergency is defined as our medical services being overwhelmed. They are not, and have not been this entire year. With no state of emergency, any lockdowns or restrictions on individuals or businesses are unlawful, and anyone imposing those upon the population is doing so illegally. Next, I'd like to ask that the Board of Supervisors resume in-person meetings. If the masks work so well, what is the issue with this? If they don't work, then why are you wearing them? Also, every other county in California has meetings open to the public. Also, every other county in California has meetings open to the public, and we can see that administrative staff is actually in the office at the meeting. Why are the Board of Supervisors not in the office at the meeting? Are they more special than these other staffs? The Bagley-Keen Act in the California Constitution states that such meetings, as Board of Supervisors meetings, need to be open to the public. Further, it says if a teleconference is done, then the Act provides for audio and visual teleconference meetings. When a teleconference meeting is held, each site from which a member of the body participates must be accessible to the public. So who's home are we meeting at next? Will it be Supervisor Fletcher? Will it be Supervisor Vargas? So that's just in the Bagley-Keen Act, that's what I'm referring to. So we ask, please reopen these meetings to the public so we can see that you see and hear us. When we call in, we have no idea if you're listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is nine three six four, nine three six four.
Good morning. This is Michelle Krug. I am glad that you are taking the public health seriously and not opening up the supervisor meetings too quickly at this time. I am calling for two reasons. One, I wanted to appreciate your proclamation for Dr. Solonius and Universidad Popular, that organization is just such a crux of North County civic engagement, and I really appreciate them being recognized for that. And I know she and her sister are out every single day right now with the vaccination, and they just do it because it's the right thing to do. The second request is to consider our committees and our boards as being able to be... I'm on the board, the persons with disabilities. Our meetings are on Zoom, they're easily recordable. I would love to see these recordings of these board meetings and committees, et cetera, commissions, being able to be put on the county website, so that people who are not able to make those particular meetings have the ability to be engaged. Also, I think it's critical that we put our links to these meetings on the county website so that they're easily accessible and people don't have to go through reaching a county staff person to be able to get a link each and every time, and I would love them to be a recurring link. So just a consideration for transparency and for accessibility. Thank you for all of the work that you do. Have a productive rest of the meeting.
Thank you. And our final speaker is one four two five, one four two five. If you'd like to address the board on non-agenda public communication, you may proceed now.
This is Barry Anfini from Carlsbad, Honorable Board of Supervisors. When it comes to greenhouse gases, the county can't have a bold plan for zero carbon and simultaneously support the county's flawed and unnecessary Palomar Airport expansion master plan. The plan is based on a flawed cap that was invalidated by the county board in 2020. To protect public health and the planet and meet its zero-carbon emission goals, the county needs to act with the urgency that climate emergency demands. So I'm requesting that you take action to invalidate the master plan until EPA regulations for aircraft GHDs are in place and the plan can be evaluated according to the new cap. The plan will increase DHD emissions from aircraft, leaving communities within 10 miles of the airport most vulnerable to dangerous pollutants. The plan could have prevented additional GHDs and health impacts from aircraft emissions by choosing not to expand to a D airport, but the choice was made to do so anyway. Besides the 2016 EPA determination of public health endangerment from aircraft emissions and the development of our new county cap, the good news is that a coalition of 12 states led by the California Attorney General and the California Air Resources Board are suing EPA for strong regulations to reduce GHDs that come from aircraft. Residents may face additional health impacts for years to come from a plan that does not adequately support the health and safety of the community, the intent of CEQA, climate action, and the human right to breathe clean air. Please take action to protect residents from additional health impacts and invalidate the Palomar Expansion Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the request for non-agenda public communications. Chair Fletcher.
Thank you, and thank you to all the speakers for calling in today. Next on our agenda is approval of the board meeting minutes, statements, and proceedings for a minute on March 16th, 2021. I will make a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by myself, a second by Vice Chair Vargas. I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Supervisor Anderson?
Aye.
Supervisor Lawson Reamer?
Aye.
Supervisor Desmond?
Aye.
Vice Chair Vargas?
Aye.
Chair Fletcher?
Fletcher, aye.
The motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
We'll now proceed with the formation of the consent calendar. I'll ask the clerk if there are any items the public wishes to be polled for discussion.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. If the board and staff and members of the public can bear with me, we have 17 items that were polled, and so I will read through the items that have been polled. Item one, item two, item three, item five, item six, item seven, item eight, item nine, item 10, item 11, item 16, item 17, item 19, item 20, item 21, item 22. And I'll note for the record that items 26 and 27 have been withdrawn at the request of Supervisor Lawson Reamer, and item 32 has been polled by the public. Item 33, as well as item one on the County of San Diego Flood Control District and item one on the In Home Supportive Services Public Authority, are closed session matters that will be considered at the conclusion of the board's public session. All the remaining items on the Board of Supervisors' agenda, as well as the San Diego County Fire Protection District agenda, may be placed in the consent calendar for your board's consideration.
Mr. Potter, I just want to confirm my notes here. So the items that have been polled by the public, before I go to my colleagues, are items one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 16, 17, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 32, and then items 25 and 27 have been withdrawn. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. We will...I will now go to my colleagues. I'll start with Supervisor Anderson.
I need a half second to process this. Do you want to skip over and come back to me, please?
Chair Fletcher, I think it was for clarification, I think it's 26 and 27 were the ones that were polled, right?
26 and 27.
26 and 27. That is correct.
Thank you.
Chair Fletcher, I'm good.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Thank you. Supervisor Lawson Reamer?
I'd like to pull 18, and then I have some comments on one of the items on consent.
All right, 18 has been polled. Why don't you go ahead and do your comments now?
Sure. I just want to make a couple of comments on the legislative program that I submitted. This is item number 25. You know, I think it's just really sad, you know, what's happened in the last couple weeks with violence against our AAPI community, and, you know, this represents a larger trend that we've suffered in this country for a really long time on gun violence, and so I just think it's really important that we bring forward this item to continue pressing for gun safety and gun sense solutions at the state and federal level, and so I'm just very proud to bring this forward and grateful for my colleagues' support.
All right, thank you. Let's go to Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just so 18 has now been pulled.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to register my no vote on item 25. California is already one of the states with the most stringent background checks already in place on guns. You know, you can't go to a gun show and buy a gun without a background check. You can't sell one to your neighbor or your friend or your cousin or whatever without a background check. So I feel the state of California has already got, you know, one of the most restrictive background checks in place, so I'm going to be registering a no vote on item 25 in the consent.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Vargas?
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. The only item I wanted to make a comment on, it was, it's really as a result of having served on the governing board of Southwestern College for over seven years and our EMT program, right? So on item number 12, I understand that fees need to be assessed and changed in order for the county to be able to recover the cost of what it takes to provide services. However, I do want to note that I'm concerned about this, and increases in fees can make it harder for especially communities of color. There's a lot of young people in our communities that go into this particular field, so I appreciate that in an effort to mitigate the impacts of increased fee, there's a recommendation in proposing a three-year phase-in approach for implementation of the fee. But in addition to this phase-in fee, I was wondering if there is a possibility to allow for individuals to pay their fees in installment as a way to further provide assistance, and I would hope that this is something that the department would consider, and I'm also interested in hearing more about whether there are opportunities to consider subsidizing part of the fees. And so my understanding is that other places offer this. It would be, I would be curious to see what the impact would be in our county if we were to consider something like this. So aside from that, I will support this item.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Vargas. I have no items to poll and no additional comments to make. I will second the motion. We have a motion by Supervisor Anderson, seconded by myself, to approve the remaining items on the consent calendar, with the note of Supervisor Desmond registering a no vote on agenda item 25. Before I have the clerk call the roll, I will just reiterate one time, and the clerk can confirm the items that we will discuss today will be agenda items one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 32. Mr. Clerk, if you can confirm that, and if that is correct, then call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. Yes, that is correct.
Excuse me, I thought 25 is polled. Is that...
No, it was not polled, Supervisor Anderson.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
I just wanted to make a quick comment to it.
Sure.
I worked very hard in Sacramento to ensure that guns prohibited people did not have access to weapons in this state. When I started, we had 19,000 people that are prohibited. These were felons and others that shouldn't have had access to guns, but they had 38,000 weapons. And I did legislation to focus on that because there's a big difference between illegal possession and legal ownership, and I would like to register as a no vote on 25 because I think that a lot of these items are not helpful. They're simple window dressing, and they're not closing the gaps that allow criminals to have weapons. And even in our cannabis ordinance, we saw that the sheriff shut down one of the illegal pot shops, and there was a former felon in possession of a pistol. He should have never had possession of that weapon, and as we get that ordinance back, I think that we need to think in terms of who we're willing to waive and allow to have ownership of dispensaries when we know these people are violating gun laws. So with that, I'd like to register as a no vote on 25 as well, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Anderson. So you have a motion by Supervisor Anderson, a second by myself, to approve the consent calendar, with the note that Supervisors Desmond and Anderson are registering a no vote on agenda item 25. With that, I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Supervisor Anderson?
Aye.
Supervisor Lawson Reamer?
Aye.
Supervisor Desmond?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vargas?
Vargas, aye.
Chair Fletcher?
Fletcher, aye.
The motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
We're now going to proceed with agenda item five. We have a number of speakers on this item, and I want our public health staff to be able to get back to the work they're doing in preparation for issues surrounding COVID today that have to be dealt with, and we'll ask members of the public, if you signed up to speak on this item, to please call in at this time. After we hear a presentation from staff, we will then go to public speakers and followed by board discussion. So at this point, let me turn it over to staff for their presentation.
Good morning, Chair Fletcher and members of the board. Today's presentation will feature Dr. Woma Wooten, who will provide a public health update, as well as additional information on the county's status on the state's tiered system. We'll then be joined by Nick Machion, our agency director and head of T3, for an update on the vaccination efforts underway throughout the county, as well as an update on outreach, education, and communication efforts. Following Nick will be Dr. Luke Bergman, our Director of Behavioral Health Services, to provide an update on rates of deaths by suicide and opiate use, and examine the broader behavioral health challenges and impacts of the pandemic. They will be switching to a look at finance, where Michael Vu, our Chief Administrative Officer, will provide an update on the recent COVID-19 funding community workshops. Andy Pease, our Incident Command Finance Chief, will provide an update on funding sources, and finally, Ebony Shelton, our Chief Financial Officer, will provide an update on the Small Business Grants Program. Without further ado, I'll welcome Dr. Wooten.
Thank you, Don. Good morning, Chair Fletcher and members of the board. Since the last presentation to your board on March 16th, this is the current epic curve. This slide shows COVID-19 cases by onset of illness and provides a historical review of daily cases to date. As you recall, the regional stay-at-home order was lifted by the state on January 25th. Thankfully, the local number of cases by onset of illness has continued to decline since this time, and vaccinations in San Diego County have reached nearly 2 million. These actions will hopefully contribute to San Diego being assigned to a less restrictive tier. Today, the governor will make an announcement about changes to the blueprint for a safer economy. In a close-up view from January 1st through April 4th of this year, daily case counts have indeed continued to wane. Cases continue to be below 500 since March 4th. Indeed, this is good news. Since the last presentation to your board, an additional 6,005 cases of COVID-19 have been reported, for a total of 271,654 positive COVID-19 cases. These are PCR-confirmed tests and do not include migrant cases or non-county resident cases. These numbers are as of 11:59 PM Sunday, April 4th. This table provides a summary of cumulative cases with a breakdown by age, gender, hospitalization, ICU admission, and deaths. The age range of all cases is from 0 to 108 years of age, with a median age of 36 years. The 20- to 49-year-old age group continues to comprise 54% of all cases. Gender distribution remains unchanged. Hospitalizations make up 5.5% of all cases, and of those hospitalized, individuals over the age of 50 comprise approximately 75%. Furthermore, 1,657 of those hospitalized have been admitted to the ICU. These numbers are also decreasing and make up approximately 0.6 of the total number of cases and 11.1% of the total number of those hospitalized. The total number of cases also include 3,583 deaths, or 1.3% of all cases. The age range of those who have died is from 10 to 106 years, with a median age of 77 years. All COVID-19 data and even more information can be found on our county website, www-coronavirus-sd.com. Now, looking at the trends for hospitalization and ICU admissions, the next four slides share the percentage decrease for the past 30 and 14 days. In the past 30 days, hospital census data from March 6th to April 4th show a decreasing trend of 50%. In the past 14 days, hospital census data from March 22nd to April 4th show a decreasing trend of... trend of 23%. For ICU admissions in the past 30 days, ICU census data from March 6th to April 4th show a decreasing trend of 51%, while in the last 14 days, from March 22nd to April 4th, ICU census decreased by 29%. Now, although the confirmed COVID-19 hospitalization census and ICU census are not declining as rapidly to the 30 and 14-day time periods presented to your board on March 16th, we can see that the number of patients hospitalized and in the ICU are continuing to decline. As a reminder, over 95% of all COVID-19 deaths have underlying medical conditions. In our preliminary comparison of state-registered leading causes of death among San Diego County residents for 2020, COVID-19 deaths have moved from sixth, which we shared with you last fall, to currently the third-leading cause of death in the county with 1,720 deaths. COVID-19 was also the third-leading cause of deaths in the United States last year as well, replacing suicide as one of the top-leading causes of death. As seen on this slide, suicide also dropped from the top 10 leading causes of death to 12th locally. Now, in the next slide, the San Diego County Triggers Dashboard monitors data by three areas: epidemiology surveillance or surveillance, healthcare or hospital capacity, and public health response. Today, again, only one of the 13 triggers on this dashboard has exceeded its threshold level, which is community outbreaks. However, it is very encouraging to see that the community outbreaks have continued to decrease during the past months of this year and we are much closer to the normal threshold of no more than seven outbreaks in the past seven days. Now, as previously shared, the state's monitoring system includes three core metrics: case rate, testing positivity, and the health equity metric. The county's unadjusted case rate is currently 5.8. The adjusted case rate is pending state's calculations, which will be available today at noon. The testing positivity percentage is 2.3%, which is in the orange tier. The health equity metric evaluates the testing positivity rate of areas that experience the least healthy conditions in the county. For this week, the health equity testing percentage is 2.6, which is also in the orange tier. Going to the next slide, this reviews three ways that the San Diego County could advance from the red tier to the orange tier. There are three options. The first is the traditional blueprint framework. The second is the accelerated progression based on health equity quartile testing positivity percentage. And the third option is the expanded case rate upon meeting statewide vaccine equity metric goals. As stated previously, all three methods are based primarily on thresholds for the case rate with options one and option two, options one and two also including testing positivity percentage and the health equity testing positivity percentage. Of these three methods, it is most likely that San Diego County will advance once the case rate threshold for the orange tier is expanded, which is option three, from the statewide administration of 4 million doses of COVID-19 vaccine in the vaccine equity quartile. In this case of option three and achieving goal number two, where there is statewide vaccination of 4 million doses in health equity locations, the case rate threshold is expanded from 1 to 3.9 to 2 to 5.9 per 100,000 populations to reach the orange tier. As displayed in option three, if the state reaches 4 million doses in the vaccine equity quartile, and since San Diego County has had a case rate below 5.9 for the past two weeks, then San Diego County could move to the orange tier effective tomorrow, Wednesday, April 7th. It is anticipated that the statewide goal will be achieved today. These results and the adjusted case rate, again, should be available at noon by the state. In the next slide, the state is currently operating, as stated, under the blueprint for a safer economy framework. As of Tuesday, April 5th today, or rather Monday, April 5th, the state had three counties in the purple tier, 36 in the red tier, 17 in the orange tier, and two in the yellow tier. These numbers will change today afternoon. As we wait for the state to post this week's calculated metrics, we are showing metrics based on calculations by our staff. Again, the unadjusted case rate for March 21st through March 27th after a seven-day lag is 5.8, which is the red tier in the print blueprint threshold, option one. But if option three is achieved, San Diego County could be in the orange tier, which is again option three on the prior slide. Going to the next slide, this shows the trends for unadjusted and adjusted case rates over time. Note that the case rate has increased slightly from last week, but still is in the expanded threshold to reach the orange tier if the statewide vaccination in the health equity quartiles reach 4 million doses administered. While there is indeed good news regarding the declining COVID-19 daily case counts, the pending 4 million vaccine doses administered statewide in health equity areas, and the potential positive change in the local tier status, there remains the looming public health threat of COVID-19 variants. Four variants have been found in San Diego County: the UK, the Brazilian, and the two West Coast variants. The B117 or the UK variant is most noted. As of yesterday, April 5th, in San Diego County, 392 confirmed cases have been reported, which is 113 more cases than reported to your board three weeks ago. Of the total cases here, there has been nine hospitalizations, five more since the last board report, and one death, which is unchanged since my last report. The median age is 36 years and the age range is 0 to 93 years of age. 49% are females and 51% are males. Regarding other variants, three county resident cases of the P1 or the Brazilian variant have been found with no known travel history. 35 cases of the two West Coast variants, B1427 where there are 10 cases and B1429 where there are 25 cases, have been reported. To date, no cases of the South African variant, B1351, have been identified locally. Under the leadership of our Public Health Laboratory Director Brett Austin, the county has developed the capacity to conduct the whole genome sequencing to detect variants since early March. Now, to support continued public health efforts in the COVID-19 response, the Public Health Services Department has received two new funding opportunities. The first grant is the Racial and Ethnic Approaches to Community Health Program or the REACH Grant. This almost $630,000 grant supports COVID-19 and influenza vaccination coverage for racial and ethnic groups who are experiencing disproportionate vaccination rates and are at risk for adverse health outcomes associated with influenza and COVID-19. The second, much larger grant, is the Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity or the ELC grant in the amount of $123,774,567. It focuses on the expansion of COVID-19 testing, case investigation, and contact tracing, as well as surveillance, containment, and mitigation through six project strategies that are listed here on the left, on the right of the slide. It is focused on supporting, it is focused on supporting our public health infrastructure. The recommendation for authority to accept these revenues is included in today's report. In closing, as cases are declining and more people are being vaccinated, we are continuously encouraged. As we visit, or rather, as we wait for the arrival of more vaccines, all San Diegans are urged to continue following all preventive measures. The CDC released guidance for fully vaccinated individuals a few weeks ago. These individuals can visit indoors with other fully vaccinated people without wearing masks or physical distancing, visit indoors with unvaccinated individuals from a single household who are at low risk for severe COVID-19 disease without wearing masks or physically distancing, and refrain from quarantine and testing following unknown exposure if asymptomatic. In addition, recommendations by the CDC and the state still require that everyone still wash your hands, watch your distance, and wear your mask. These actions are very important. Avoid median and large in-person gatherings or groups, and if individuals do become sick, they should isolate at home and get tested. And when it is your turn to receive the COVID-19 vaccine, get vaccinated, as vaccinations are the pathway to a continued economic reopening and the potential end of the COVID-19 pandemic. Soon, all individuals 16 years of age and older will be able to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. So thank you to everyone for your continued vigilance to help San Diegans be COVID-safe. Now, please welcome Agency Director Nick Machion.
Thank you, Dr. Wooten. Recently, we're seeing a positive change in the vaccine supply and this is helping us to bolster and to begin to more max, fully maximize our county's vaccination ecosystem that we've been growing since mid-December of last year. Another change we've been monitoring is the onboarding of vaccine providers with Blue Shield, which is actively stepping into its role as the state's third-party administrator of the statewide vaccine network. Many of our hospitals, federally qualified health centers, and providers in the region have signed up with Blue Shield and even more are in the process. The majority of counties, including our own, have signed an agreement with the state, California, regarding vaccine supplies. And our agreement memorializes the collaboration already occurring between our county and the state. Importantly, it provides our county with the ability to continue to redistribute vaccine between providers based on where we see the need in our communities. Under our agreement with the state, the county is also working collaboratively with Blue Shield on this new model of vaccine distribution. So what does this really all mean for our regional vaccine ecosystem? Well, vaccines are still arriving in our county from the state and the federal government and its third-party administrator. And regarding our vaccine that our own county public health department has been receiving, well, that management of the vaccine allocation and shipments is being shifted from primarily the county to Blue Shield. In addition, more parts of our ecosystem, such as our federally qualified health centers and now receiving directions, direct allocations from the federal government, which has always included things like the military, the VA, and the tribal nations, and retail pharmacies. The county of San Diego will continue to support the allocation process for our county-hosted vaccine sites, city-county partnerships, mobile events such as Operation Collaboration, Project Save, and our homebound San Diegans model. Blue Shield is taking the lead in supporting the rest of the regional vaccine ecosystem, which includes the vaccination superstations, the hospital-based vaccination sites, and many of the clinic partnerships. Bottom line, the work we do with all of our partners is not changed in ensuring equitable access to vaccinations of our San Diegans. The shift of allocations really only affects the backend management of vaccine, not our ability to ensure it reaches the health equity areas of our community. Now, as you can see in this county map, we still have many vaccine access points countywide. Just this week, we have available 222 vaccination sites comprised of five superstations, 28 county and partner vaccination sites, including our mobile and one-day events, and now 189 pharmacy locations providing vaccinations with Costco and Walgreens and other pharmacies that are joining the list. And this is just a moment in time snapshot, more even coming onboard. We retain the flexibility as supplies increase to stand ready to increase up to 50,000 vaccinations per day. Now, as the eligibility criteria, as Dr. Wooten mentioned, continues to expand, more and more individuals can now get vaccinated. In just over a week, all individuals of the age 16 and older will be eligible to be vaccinated at any of the 222 vaccination sites located countywide. But we know that it's not just the large number and the location of vaccination sites that are, that are the key to ending the pandemic. Outreach, education, and community engagement in this next slide is vital to connecting San Diegans, most disproportionately affected by COVID-19, with opportunities to get informed about COVID-19 vaccine and to get vaccinated. Since our update last month, we've expanded the successful health equity strategy with Project Save from the South Region to other parts of our county. And as you may recall, Project Save stands for Scheduling Assistance for Vaccination Equity. This is our umbrella effort to increase vaccination equity for all San Diegans in San Diego County by like, things like equipping community health workers with daily blocks of appointments to help schedule COVID-19 vaccination appointments, resource tabling and outreach efforts in neighborhoods and local resource centers, providing no appointment site events, and increasing collaborative efforts to help those needing assistance, just to name a few. Project Save is intended to assist individuals who are unable to schedule appointments due to lack of access to technology or language barriers or whatever challenges in getting vaccinated. Today, over 1,500 appointments have been made and we're working to do even more with expanded efforts that include vaccination sites in the cities of San Diego, Oceanside, Vista, Escondita, Lemon Grove, and El Cajon, and more yet to come. Resource tabling in Oceanside and the Exomic Center of San Diego and mobile vaccination no appointment sites, with the most recent event held on Cesar Chavez Day, March 31st, at the Sherman Heights Community Center, thanks to Vice Chair Vargas. And nearly 300 no appointment vaccinations were provided to this community in one single day. And we continue to grow these efforts countywide while keeping our focus on the most vulnerable. While nearly 80%, let me say that again, while nearly 80% of San Diegans aged 65 and older have been vaccinated, way to go. We still have more vulnerable seniors and homebound adults who need our help. We originally focused on homebound seniors, but we know many more San Diegans aged 16 to 64 are homebound due to disabilities and need our help to get vaccinated. So thanks to 211 San Diego Service of Places for these individuals to register, we have now grown that list to over 1,500 San Diegans. Once on that list, our county's Aging and Independent Services Team reaches out and the purpose of, they do a screening and they determine their level of need due to physical, cognitive, or developmental disability. And for those who are mobile but have a disability that makes it more difficult for them to go to a traditional vaccination site, we have partnerships with the PACE programs and the San Diego Regional Center for vaccination events that are more accommodating to their needs. To help reach those who are truly homebound, we've developed partnerships throughout the county that are comprised of Alvarado Hospital, Sharp Healthcare, Tri-City Medical Center, Operation Collaboration, Chula Vista Fire Department, and many more partnerships in the works. And I'm proud to say now over 400 homebound San Diegans have been vaccinated to date. And individually, these appointments, just to point, take up to an hour to first set up on the vaccination and the post-observation period could take up to 30 minutes. So they're very labor-intensive. But we know there's much more work still to be done and we're working as fast as we can to reach every single homebound San Diegan in need of our help. Now, thanks to the quick action that this county has taken back in mid-December and the planning months before that, with our speed and accuracy and our broad-based effort with the county, hospitals, cities, clinics, pharmacies, and other partners, we continue to outpace all Southern California counties in the rate of doses administered and still one of the state's highest-performing urban counties. In fact, recently, the California Department of Public Health updated the state goal of individuals vaccinated from 70%, if you remember the number we're using, to 75% of eligible population. So for our region, this now means we need to vaccinate just over 2 million people of the nearly 2.7 million San Diegans aged 16 and older. But we have good news. We are ready, nearly one-third of the way there for the fully, for those who have been fully vaccinated, and 51%, over 50% of our goal population has been, has received at least their first dose. This represents over 1 million San Diegans, and we expect even greater progress over the next three to four weeks. So with that, I now like to turn it over to Dr. Luke Bergman, who'll be discussing another important issue that's been affecting the most vulnerable in our county during this pandemic, namely mental health. Dr. Bergman?
Thank you, Nick. As I have periodically over the course of the pandemic, I want to review some of the significant impacts that COVID-19 has had on behavioral health within the larger health and healthcare landscape. As in the past, the As in the past, the clear presentation of these data is critical on two fronts. First, the behavioral health impacts of COVID are profound and will continue to be significant for years to come. And second, behavioral health impacts are often pointed to in the public discourse as a risk of the public health measures that have been taken, and in these contexts, they have occasionally been referenced inaccurately. This is especially true of suicide mortality data, and I'll review these, which are rigorously maintained by our by our medical examiner's office, in a moment. I want to acknowledge that even accurately understood, however, they capture only a fractional picture. To better fill this out, in the past, I've referenced data published over the last number of months highlighting an over 200% increase relative to two years earlier in rates of anxiety and depression risk among the general adult population, and 500% increase in rates of severe depression, with higher rates among those earning less money and those who identify as Hispanic in particular. Just yesterday morning, the CDC released additional data showing a significant increase in anxiety and depression among adults between August 2020 and this past February, especially among young adults. And data being published this coming May in the Journal Pediatrics show that both suicide ideation and attempt have increased significantly among children and youth since the onset of the pandemic, and that rates of both increase in direct response to periods of greater pandemic surge. Locally, we are seeing some of this reflected in relative upticks in emergency department visits for behavioral health-related concerns. While overall ED visits are still slightly down compared to pre-COVID months, rates of psychiatric and drug use-related visits among folks presenting to the ED have continued a steady increase, albeit at a slow pace. Some of this increase likely involves dynamics that we see in the data published in Pediatrics, and as with those data, does not translate into an overall increase in rates of suicide death. In San Diego County, we continue to see more or less static suicide rates month over month, with changes more reflective of a seasonal pattern than of rates being driven by the pandemic and with single-month numbers from 2019, where there were 43 deaths in March and 48 deaths in August eclipsing any single-month number in 2020 or thus far in 2021. Where we continue to see the most striking and devastating evidence of behavioral health distress has been in drug overdose mortality. The early indicators that showed an increase in drug overdose deaths following the shelter-in-place order in March have remained elevated. There was a terrible spike late this past summer when over four people died every day in our county due to drug overdose. Things seemed to be heading in the right direction, but then reversed course again. There were nearly 3.5 drug overdose deaths a day in San Diego County in January. As I've noted previously, this increase is likely the result of a combination of things, all of which have some relationship to the pandemic. These include the greater likelihood that people are using drugs alone, which always puts people at greater risk of overdose death, and that there has that there have been disruptions in the supply chains and points of access to illicit drugs, meaning that people often aren't using supplies that they can trust. And the supply chain has become especially deadly during the pandemic because of a sustained influx of the super potent opioid fentanyl into local drug supplies, where it's found in powdered cocaine and even pressed pills like Xanax and Adderall that are sold on the street. During this past February, there were 59 deaths attributable to fentanyl, a 150% increase over the previous February, and a 500% increase relative to February of 2019. I need to pause for a moment to emphatically recommend that everyone in this county be aware of the particular danger of fentanyl in the local drug supply. Please avoid street drug use if you are able, and if you're going to use drugs, don't do it alone, and have naloxone on hand. With drug overdose mortality at these sustained levels, it's imperative that we marshal all of our resources to take the most effective actions possible. We'll be returning to the board with an update on the development of a harm reduction strategy which should help point a way forward. In the meantime, I want again to remind everyone that treatment is available and as accessible as it ever has been. Indeed, I've reported to your board previously that our entire county-funded system has shifted to make telephonic and telehealth eminently accessible, and these, represented in the yellow and orange bars respectively on this slide, have become the primary modes of therapeutic contact across our county. While there was a precipitous and dangerous drop in access to substance use disorder care immediately following the onset of the pandemic locally, the system nimbly responded, and by late fall, total care volume had returned to levels nearly what they had been before the pandemic. I want to draw everyone's attention to the graph on the right, and in particular, the dip in the blue bars representing face-to-face contact that is consistent, falling in late December and early January with the most recent and massive pandemic surge. Notice the nearly seamless and immediate increase in telephonic and telehealth service volume, reflecting a maturity in our own service capacity, and also that if you can get access to a phone, you can get access to care. Thank you, and now I'll hand it over to Assistant Chief Administrative Officer Michael Vu for an update on the community funding workshops.
Thank you, Dr. Bergman. Under the CARES Act of 2020, the county used federal funding for a variety of relief efforts, including small business grants, food services, child welfare services outreach, childcare services, and income stipends for individuals financially affected by the COVID-19 pandemic public health stay-at-home orders. The American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 is poised to directly allocate $647.5 million of COVID-19 relief funding to the County of San Diego and $611.6 million to the 18 incorporated cities within San Diego County, a total of $1.26 billion to the county region. At the County of San Diego Board of Supervisors hearing on March 2, 2021, the board requested that community workshops be hosted for the public to give input to the county on the potential uses of anticipated funds under the American Rescue Plan. Five 90-minute community workshops were held virtually between March 15th and March 19th. 386 individuals participated across the county. Interpretation was provided in five languages, Arabic, Chinese, Filipino, Spanish, and Vietnamese. Myself and five of my county colleagues, along with the Board of Supervisors, acted as panelists to facilitate a presentation and feedback session that included interactive polling and chat with the audience via Zoom webinar. These community workshops gave participants the opportunity to provide feedback on how they would like to see the funds from the American Rescue Plan spent. Based on categories identified in the plan, participants were able to engage with our online polling feature and rank the categories in order from highest priority to lowest. Polls were provided in all six languages, and additional feedback beyond the 10 categories was also solicited from the public via the chat feature of the webinar. This slide shows the countywide results of our polling and includes some subcategories that were also ranked by participants. As you can see from the slide, participants ranked food assistance as the number-one priority for allocating funds. The subcategories are also presented in ranked order. For example, under food assistance, food banks rank higher than the Great Plates Delivered program. Through the robust feedback from participants, we were also able to gather many additional ideas to consider across all categories, such as providing flexible grocery stipends, stipends for childcare, mortgage support, rental assistance for small businesses, transportation vouchers, waiving permitting fees for events, hazard pay for essential workers, support to bring back public arts, music, and theater, and many more. We continue to await for the federal guidelines to be released so we have a clear understanding of how stimulus funds can be used. That said, we would like to give you a general concept of how these funds can be allocated and used. Let me turn it over to Andy Pease, the COVID-19 Incident Command Finance Chief, who will give you a conceptual allocation framework of the American Rescue Plan funds. Andy?
Thank you, Michael. Good morning, Chair Fletcher and supervisors. The county's weekly spend rate for our COVID response is estimated at about $11.6 million a week, compared to $11.9 million I reported at the last update. We see an increase in vaccination spending now estimated at $3 million a week. The other areas are holding steady with some slight adjustments, with the exception of the COVID Positive Income Stipend Program, where we see a significant reduction in spending for that program. We are currently spending around $100,000 a week, which is down from $900,000 just a couple of weeks ago. There has been no change to the program. The reduction in cost appears tied to the number of COVID positive cases in the community, and perhaps as more positive individuals have access to paid sick leave and benefits. As a reminder in what Michael just discussed, we are estimating that for the San Diego region, we could receive over $1.25 billion of the American Rescue Act funding under the allocation called Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. For today's presentation, I'm going to call it ARPA. So, as of the $1.26 billion, $611 would go to the cities, and $647.5 million would be to the county. These funds can cover costs over the next several years through December of 2024. And as Michael indicated, your board asked us to return with the proposed framework and the use of these funds. In just a moment, I'm going to present to you a recommended framework for your consideration, and today we are asking the board to approve in concept the proposed framework. We say it is in concept because we have yet to receive the federal guidelines, and on the details and the use of these funds, we have yet to even receive the funds. And until we receive such guidelines, we are making assumptions on how these dollars can be spent. Our biggest assumptions include that these funds can be used as flexibly as the CARES Act funds, and that these funds can be used retroactively prior to the bill being signed into law on March 11th. So this is a conceptual framework, and we will return to the board to modify, if necessary, after the guidelines are published. So now that I have qualified and caveated everything about the framework, let's take a look at it. This chart is the recommended framework, and it shows the recommended use of the ARPA dollars as well as other anticipated funding by component. If you look at the very bottom in the green under the grand total, you will see that it totals almost $1 billion at $996.1 million. You'll see under the ARPA column, a total of $653 million, which you'll note is higher than the estimated allocation of $647.5 million, and that is because we include assumed interest earnings to help cover these costs. And finally, the other funding column has a total of $342.6 million, and it's comprised of a variety of funds, including Emergency Rental Assistance Program revenue, FEMA funds, Medi-Cal, third-party insurance, and some of the ELC funds that Dr. Wooton mentioned earlier. In looking at the component column, the first category is prior and ongoing county response costs totaling $391.7 million, of which just over 232 is the ARPA dollars, and we estimate another $159 million of FEMA and third-party insurance and the ELC funding and so forth. These are estimated costs through September to cover our basic county response efforts, including vaccinations for our T3 strategy of testing, tracing, treatment, for administrative costs to manage, over $1 billion worth of funding that we have received over the past year on these efforts. And when I report out on our weekly spend rate, other than the Great Plates Program and the Income Stipend Program, that's what this line represents and is covering. I'll note that this is the one component that is most subject to change in the coming months, and it's directly tied to the trajectory and duration of the virus and the reopening of the economy. Now, for the remaining components, like food assistance, which would be the next one, while we will we have a proposed framework and the use of the ARPA funds, we still need to work out many of the details. And so we'll be establishing project leads in the county for each of these components to work out the specifics, incorporating the input of subject matter experts, the community, and then applying an equity lens, and then coming back to the board with updates and approval as necessary. So, for the component of food assistance, we have over $87 million. We are recommending $20 million of ARPA funds for projects such as food banks, food pantries, community gardens, and other areas to address the food and nutritional needs of the community. And then we have an estimated $67 million for the continuations of the Great Plates Delivered Program using FEMA funds. For mental health services, we are proposing $30 million of ARPA funds for youth services, suicide prevention, school-based programs, improved access and service delivery, and as well as capital and infrastructure. For rental assistance, we are not recommending the use of this bucket of ARPA dollars, as we already have $107 million of Emergency Rental Assistance Program funding through HR 133, and it is likely we will receive more federal dollars for rental assistance in the coming weeks. Under senior and youth services, we are recommending $10 million for senior respite care, remote access for students and families, and transportation vouchers for seniors, youth, and young adults. We are recommending $10 million for childcare vouchers for impacted families. Your board approved on February 9th the commitment of $30 million of any future federal stimulus funds for the Small Business Grant Program. We are recommending increasing it to $50 million, and in a few minutes, Ebony will provide additional information about this program. For homeless services, we are recommending an investment of $100 million, which could be used for the acquisition of hotels, shelters, housing, wraparound, and other support services. We are proposing $40 million for direct stimulus payments, which continues the continuation of the COVID Positive Income Stipend Program, as well as a direct payment program to targeted families allocated through an equity lens, with details to be worked out, and we'll return to your board with that proposal. Under infrastructure, we are recommending $46 million, $10 million for investment for broadband in the unincorporated area, and then $36 million for the acquisition of a hotel or a facility to stand up a permanent emergency shelter to be used for future pandemics or other local emergencies, such as a migrant shelter or due to a fire. We are proposing $40 million for premium pay for county government essential workers. This would be a one-time hazard pay for identified essential county employees, and I'll show you another chart in just a moment on that. We are not recommending funding of ARPA for family leave, as there are already state and federal funding dedicated for these costs. Finally, we are recommending $75 million for costs to address any long-term COVID health and economic recovery impact needs beyond September. Again, in total, this is close to $1 billion in proposed uses. There remains details to work out on many of the components, of which we'll come back to your board for approval, and we will also keep you apprised of any other updates that we receive. The next slide, this, here it is, the premium pay or hazard pay is one of the components that has generated interest. So we have put this chart together so you can see how the costs might break down for employees in each of the nine unions, as well as some of the unrepresented staff. Now, I'll note, these are estimates, these are not final numbers, they're based on certain assumptions, and any final allocation would be contingent on the ultimate structure approved and any terms that are negotiated with the various unions. This next slide shows the timing of the funding. Under the American Rescue Plan Act, we will receive half of our allocation within 60 days of enactment of the bill, so about $324 million we should receive by May 11th, and then we'll have to wait at least another year to receive the second half of those funds. We're also assuming $6 million in interest earnings and $342 million in other funding. So approval of today's framework means we'll be moving forward with obligations well before we receive the final and total ARPA funding. So for today's board actions, we are recommending the board approve in concept the COVID-19 ARPA and stimulus fund framework, and next steps will include reviewing the federal guidelines, which are due to be released at any time, ensure the framework is in alignment with these guidelines, and return to the board if not. We will work on the development of the details of the various components and return back to the board, and we'll also include the establishment of appropriations. And for my last slide, because there are actually other recommendations in today's items related to finance, recommendation six is to approve the establishment of $107 million of appropriations for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program based on federal and state funding, and your board has been provided updates on this program in the past. Recommendation seven is to approve the establishment of $80 million of appropriations for the Great Plates Delivered Program for costs for the entire fiscal year through June of 2021, which is 100% funded with FEMA and possibly some Cal OES revenue. Recommendation eight is requesting the authority to accept the $123.8 million in funding from the California Department of Public Health and from the Center for Disease Control for the ELC funding, which Dr. Wooton talked about. These funds are good through July of 2023, and as she indicated, can be used for laboratory enhancements and investments in our overall public health infrastructure, as well as for some of our COVID-19 response efforts. Recommendation 10 is for approval to accept $629,000 in grant funds from the CDC for the REACH grant to be used to implement community-focused COVID-19 and flu vaccination activities that increase vaccine awareness, access, and confidence among groups experiencing access, and confidence among groups experiencing health inequities and disparities in vaccination coverage. Then recommendation four and five is to approve to execute a lease amendment for our office space located at forty nine ninety View Ridge Avenue, which extends the lease through February with two six-month options. The space is currently being used to house the temporary staff that operate in the ERAP program. And finally, recommendation nine is to, is authorization for the Director of the Department of Purchasing and Contracting to issue a competitive procurement for a COVID nineteen sero epidemiological study. I hope I got that right, to determine the extent and spread of COVID nineteen in San Diego County, and prior ELC funds will be used to cover the cost of this study. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ebony for an update on the Small Business Grant Program.
Thanks, Andy. Chair Fletcher, members of the board, today I plan to spend a few moments following up to your board's most recent action regarding the Small Business Stimulus Program. As background, the program was established in July of last year with total funding of forty seven point five million dollars, supported by twenty seven and a half million dollars of CARES Act funding and twenty million dollars of general fund balance. Total funds requested through the application process have exceeded one point five billion dollars. And to date, the program's reached over five thousand businesses across the region with an average award of over seventy eight hundred dollars. On February the ninth, your board took action to amend the Small Business Stimulus Grant Program to allow for additional investments of at least thirty million dollars in anticipation of additional federal or state stimulus funding. In addition, your board directed the Chief Administrative Officer to provide the board with options to incorporate features into the program to promote equity across the region, as well as to provide data on businesses within the region. Using data provided by the California Employment Development Department, this slide visually depicts the composition of the region's one hundred and fourteen thousand businesses with fewer than twenty employees. The data is in order by the size of the sector and includes the number of job losses from February of two thousand and twenty to February of two thousand and twenty one, as noted by the changes to employment figures above each of the bars. The shading of each bar represents the share of this sector located within each specific district. Overall, roughly twenty eight percent of these businesses are in District Four, with a quarter of the businesses located in District Three. Just under twenty percent are in District Five, with the remaining spread between District Two and District One. As shared in previous updates to your board, the most significant job losses have occurred in the tourism industry, which on this slide includes the categories of leisure and hospitality, along with other services such as barbers and hair salons, followed by education, which includes local government education, and finally retail trade activity. Consistent with these trends, restaurant and retail foot traffic have also suffered with traffic to sit-down restaurants down, as as well as the retail trades, such as department stores and apparel stores down by over forty percent. The program began collecting sector data in November, and since that time, nearly half of the awards that were made to the program have been made to businesses in the leisure and hospitality sector, with an additional fifteen percent going to the services sector. With this as background, we'll transition to a measure of equity, the Healthy Places Index, and data on how the program has performed through these lenses. The charts on this slide depict the Healthy Places Index for the region on the left and the healthy, the health equity quartile by district on the right. Incorporating this index, which provides important information to help inform policy decisions on areas of health, housing, transportation, and more, could serve to assist your board with maximizing the program's impact to our region. Since inception of the program, roughly twenty five percent of businesses that received awards were located in the lowest health equity quartile. This compares to roughly thirty percent in the first quartile, twenty five percent in the second, and twenty percent in the third. Staff have prepared a few options for your consideration, reflecting the potential use of this metric and/or business sector-specific economic data, which we'll review next. A working group of internal experts collaborated to develop alternatives to advance equity by establishing various criteria to inform decision-making by your board. The first option is based on the current program design approved by your board and assumes an equal allocation of six million dollars by district, assuming a minimum program increase of thirty million dollars with each district continuing to make awards based on specific needs of the district. The second option is very similar to the first. With the current program design, it includes equal allocations of six million by district. Where it differs is that it sets aside twenty percent or one point two million dollars per district to be allocated based on the lowest quartile of the Healthy Place Index or to business sectors most affected by the pandemic, or based on a combination of both of these factors. Each district would make awards using this broad criteria to meet the specific needs of the district. The final option would create a set-aside of ten million dollars from the thirty million dollar program increase, with the remaining twenty million dollars equally allocated by district. This would result in each district receiving an allocation of four million dollars with awards being made based on the, based on the specific needs of the district. The ten million dollar set-aside would be used to form a regional pool of funding to be allocated to the lowest quartile of the Healthy Places Index. These awards would be processed by staff based on this predetermined criteria with an even award distribution based on the number of qualified applications received, with a maximum grant award of seventy five hundred dollars, which would support up to thirteen hundred businesses. Any unused amounts would be equally redistributed to the district offices for final award. If your board directs staff to proceed with option two or three today, we'll finalize internal preparations, including the website preparation and application modifications to reflect the modifications to the program design so that we can quickly open the application board portal once your board takes appropriation action. If the board agrees to the framework that Andy just presented, the district allocations would be adjusted proportionately to reflect the increased allocation to the program. Back to you, Don.
Thank you, Ebony. In addition to receiving this update, we recommend your board take the following additional actions with respect to this item. Ratify all actions taken in response to the local health emergency and local emergency, including entering into the agreement listed in attachment one for vaccination services. Ratify all actions taken by county fire to enter into mutual aid agreements for vaccination services with the fire agencies listed in attachment A for COVID nineteen vaccination services. Approve and authorize the third amendment to the lease agreement for the space located at forty nine ninety View Ridge Avenue, San Diego, to support the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Next, find the proposed amendment to, to this lease at forty nine ninety View Ridge Avenue in concept from, is exempt in concept from the California Quality, Environmental Quality Act. Sixth, establish appropriations in the amount of one hundred and seven million dollars for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Seventh, establish appropriations in the amount of eighty million dollars for the Great Plates Delivered Program. Eighth, authorize the acceptance of grant funding from California Department of Public Health for epidemiology and laboratory capacity enhancement detection expansion of one hundred and twenty three point eight million. Ninth, authorize the competitive solicitation for a COVID nineteen sero epidemiological study. Tenth, authorize the exception of grant funds from the Centers for Disease Control for the Racial and Ethnic Approaches to Community Health Supplemental Grant of six hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars, and take any other actions necessary to address the COVID nineteen pandemic emergency response, including providing guidance for equity allocation and award criteria options for a Small Business Stimulus Grant Program and approval in concept the COVID nineteen ARPA and stimulus grant fund framework. Subject to your questions, this concludes our presentation.
Thank you. I want to thank all of the staff for the, the, the presentation and the items. We, we have a, a number of things we need to get through today as a board, but I just want to start off by thanking everyone. I think it is, it has been a very long year, and I appreciate the tremendous work from everyone involved over the course of the last year. I think we can take great comfort in San Diego County. We are, continue to move in the right direction. Our case rates remain low, hospitalizations remain low. We continue to be a leader in vaccines administered, and I think that will facilitate us moving forward. And I think the entire state will take comfort in the governor rolling out the pathway out of this with us on a trajectory by the middle of June to have all of the tiers gone and, and businesses allowed to, to fully reopen. And so I think that those are all encouraging trends and directions that, that tell us we're headed in the right direction. As a board, we have two significant things today that we, we, we're going to have to work through. One is surrounding the framework of the ARPA funding, and I think it's really important. We realize this is just a framework. We are not appropriating any of these funds. We're not allocating any of these funds. We're simply adopting a framework. Each of the individual sections that was outlined and what is proposed to us, again, is just a suggestion or a framework. When we approve that framework, each of these items will have to be brought back in much greater detail for us to actually appropriate the funds, and there are likely to be many changes to this in the months ahead. We do not yet have the federal guidelines on these funds to give clear certainty about how they can and cannot be spent. And so we have to get those guidelines. I also want to point out that in the, in the draft proposal is to hold back seventy five million to be considered a later date. I, I think it's important for us to know that one half of these funds we will not even receive for more than a full calendar year from now. And so the situation we face as it relates to COVID could look vastly different by the time we actually get the second installment of these funds next year. And so holding back some of these funds, I think, is appropriate because we won't be able to spend it for more than a year anyway. And, and so we may want to see what the world looks like as we come out of, out of COVID and, and, and what it looks like. So we'll have time for a substantive discussion on the ARPA part of this, and when we get to that, we can bring the slide back up to, to, to look at the proposal and, and discuss. But again, we're not locking in stone. We're not appropriating the funds. We're merely providing a framework so staff has some direction to develop more robust proposals for each of these categories. Those will return to this board, and we will vote on those. And then the second thing we'll need to divide, decide is which one of the three categories we want utilized by staff for the appropriation of the Small Business Grant funding that we, we have already voted on, and so we'll need to pick one of those three. It is eleven fifteen right now. We have fifty one speakers on this item. I think if we go to public comment, that will take us at least up until twelve thirty. And then at that point, I think we will need to break for lunch. And then when we reconvene at two, we can pick up board deliberation on this item, conclude this item, and then take up agenda item nineteen. And then after that, work through the rest of the items in agenda order. So that's, in, in essence, kind of a, a little bit of what we have to, have to discuss as a board. But why don't we go ahead and, and go to our public speakers at this time? We'll see how close we get to the twelve thirty hour. If we are at or over twelve thirty, then we will recess for lunch and come back and pick up board deliberation after our break. If we finish public comment before that, then we can begin and, and work up until the twelve thirty point where we need to recess so staff can have a break for lunch. So Mr. Clerk, let me, we have you call forward the speakers on this item, and then we'll return for board deliberation.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. Also note for the record that we received seventeen e-commerce on this item. And as you mentioned, we have fifty one requests to speak on this item. Any members of the public that requested to speak on item five, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We will be calling speakers by the last four digits of their phone number. You will hear notification that your call has been unmuted. You will then need to press star six to unmute your phone. Each caller will be asked to state their name for the record, and you will have two minutes to address the board. You'll hear the sound when your time is up, so please conclude your comments at that time. I would remind the public speakers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. Erin, if you could please identify the first caller.
Thank, uh, thank you. Our first caller is five seven five five, five seven five five. Again, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, good morning, Chairperson Fletcher and supervisors. My name is Crystal Irving, and I'm a member of S C I U Local Two Two One. I've worked for the county for seven years as a protective services worker in child welfare services. And I'm happy to hear that the vaccinations are being administered at such a great rate and that the COVID numbers are continuing on the downward trend. So I first want to thank you all so much for your efforts to get us back on track in regards to COVID. We also know that COVID has exacerbated so many issues that were prevalent in our society prior to March of two thousand and twenty, such as homelessness, the lack of affordable and attainable housing, food insecurity, inadequacies in access to mental health treatment, both crisis and preventative, substance use and abuse, inequitable education systems, and access to technology, and much, much more. And those items also need your focus. But since the pandemic began in two thousand and twenty, something else was demonstrated even more clearly than ever, and that is the fact that most working families are still struggling to live a life of dignity, all while being considered essential and being called heroes. We know that this unfortunately exists in our society, but this shouldn't be the story of any worker for the county of San Diego. So I can't even begin to express how important it is that some of the nearly six hundred and fifty million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act be used to recognize the continuing sacrifices of county employees with fair and equitable hazard pay. County employees have worked extremely hard in less-than-desirable conditions to ensure that the public remains safe and has the necessary resources for the survival throughout this pandemic. And it is time for our efforts to be appreciated beyond thank you videos and eloquent emails. It's time that we get the hazard pay we deserve. Now, let me just say that what we are being offered at the negotiating table is a start, but it is simply not enough to honor the sacrifices and selflessness of our county workers that we have shown. So please pay us, respect us, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is nine three five eight, nine three five eight. Nine three five eight, please press star six.
Hi, my name is Angelina Corasani from the Center on Policy Initiatives and the Investment San Diego Families Coalition. I'm here today to reinforce that all decisions made regarding county funds are not simply financial choices, but also policy decisions that represent the priorities of our government. The I C F Coalition has been highlighting a lack of alignment between the priorities of residents and the priorities represented by this county government for several years. We advocated on many issues that resurfaced during this pandemic, including equity-based decision-making under enrollment in self-sufficiency programs, lack of supportive services for employees in the region, understaffed and underpaid county workers, and a failure to understand and support the diverse communities of our region. Had our previous government really listened to our communities and coalition, the county would have been much more well situated to support this region through the COVID nineteen pandemic. We have started to see a significant shift in the priorities represented during these meetings. As you make decisions regarding the stimulus funds, as well as the upcoming county budget, please remember to keep the communities you serve front of mind. This county should represent caring for our most vulnerable, not using migrant children to pit communities against each other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is nine two one zero, nine two one zero. Nine two one zero, please press star six to unmute yourself. If we don't hear from you when the number is called, we'll come back to you.
Hi there. Hello, San Diego County Board of Supervisors and Chair Fletcher. My name is Krista DeBouchere. I reside in the Second District, and Supervisor Joel Anderson is my elected representative. I am a member of S C I U Two Two One, and I'm speaking in support of agenda item five, San Diego County Employees Deserve Hazard Pay and Compensation for Teleworking Expenses. So I work for the San Diego County Primary Public Defender's Office as an investigator. And since March of two thousand and twenty, I, like my colleagues, have worked from home. And I, like my colleagues, are grateful to be able to work away from a congregant environment enabling us to keep each other and our families safe. But because our primary work area for the last year has been at home, it is justifiable to have a monthly fixed monetary amount for work expenses, particularly high-speed internet expenses. A fixed amount is easy to manage. A professional could determine an appropriate amount that is acceptable to the county and to taxpayers to offset the personal work expenses, such as high-speed internet. Again, my name is Krista DeBouchere. I work for the County of San Diego Primary Public Defender's Office, asking you to please support compensation for teleworking expenses, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is six seven eight one, six seven eight one.
Good morning to you all. My name is Juan Carlos Davenport, and I am an S C I U Local Two Two One member. I'm also a regular clerk in the probation department and have worked for the county for over five years. I'm speaking to you today regarding an opportunity that this new board truly has to lead by example simply through implementing and treating us all by the standard set forth through the county's own motto, "The noblest motive is the public good." Collectively, you all have a chance to, in the scope of the belief you share in that phrase to all of us. We are asking for hazard pay. Ladies and gentlemen, let me be crystal clear. This is not a request for any sort of quote-unquote "we're..." This is not a request for any sort of quote-unquote reward, nor are we using this occasion as any avenue to complain about our employment, which all of us are keenly aware is a precious commodity, especially in this day and age. Crunching the numbers, the current suggested hazard pay amounts would provide to just over $1,700 per person. If distributed equally, a mapping to about $1.42 per hour for the past full year of hazardous work, this is not acceptable. The simple fact is this. County SEIU workers on the front lines of handling the COVID crisis should have equity increases and hazard pay. Why? Because we have literally died fighting this war, and the county should have the decency to acknowledge our sacrifice. And the so-called quote-unquote "supposals" we have been initially offered are simply not enough. We demand more. Enough with this weak language. Step up to the plate and do your duty to your county team as its leaders. The county workforce since day one of all of this craziness had stepped up. It is because of this that some semblance of normalcy has been able to be maintained in our region. It would have been chaos without us. The truth is that our county cannot run without public workers, and the county must invest in its employees during this crisis, just as we have invested in it, some of us unfortunately paying the ultimate price. The county needs to put the needs of its workers first. We are simply asking to be treated with fairness. We have continued to do our work because of the, because we understand that we are a part of something important that is bigger than ourselves. It's high time for you to realize the same. It is time to respect us, protect us, and pay us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 6389. 6389.
Good morning. This is Joanna Gorman. Hello, Chairperson Fletcher and supervisors. I'm a member of SEIU Local 221, and I've worked for the county for five years. Specifically, I worked for the library, and I was reassigned to keep the public safe by COVID testing at our county sites, including the jails for almost seven months. I urge you to use some of the $650 million from the American Rescue Plan Act to recognize the continuing sacrifices of county employees with fair hazard pay. We deserve hazard pay because we continue to put ourselves in harm's way as we work on the front lines of the pandemic so that we may continue serving our communities. The county should prioritize the workers who have continued providing vital services, risking their family's health and their own health. County employees, including my colleagues at the library, are dedicated, and we do believe in the words impressed upon our county seal. The noblest motive is the public good. The public good is why we have continued to put ourselves in harm's way, and it is time for the county to invest in us. County employees are proud of the job that we have done as frontline disaster service workers. My father is an 82-year-old Vietnam veteran who served in the Navy for 30 years, and my son is taking care of him because of my COVID testing work. And because of this work, I chose to be separated from both my son and my father to lessen the risk of exposing them. Hazard pay advances the goal of racial and economic justice by showing county workers that we are essential and not expendable. We ask that county workers receive hazard pay in recognition of the work that continues to put us in harm's way. Again, we are essential and not expendable. Please vote yes on this item, and thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 2395. 2395.
Hi, my name is Akiko Morgan, and I'm calling to ask for your help in aligning beach volleyball tournaments in San Diego County. My daughter, along with many others in San Diego, has been deprived of the opportunities to compete locally. My understanding is that the state guidelines allow only two teams per day for a tournament, but the local government can make exceptions to that rule. And you need a permit from the city to hold a beach volleyball tournament, but right now, the City of San Diego is not issuing a permit because the county has not made that exception. Beach volleyball tournaments cannot be limited to two teams, like football or baseball, but it's important to note that there are only four people on the court at a time. It's not a high-contact or high-density sport, and it's played on the beach where there's always a breeze. Many high school sports have resumed. We're almost in orange here. Many of our public schools have been in the distant learning mode for over a year. Sports is something our children can do safely to promote both physical and emotional health. I would appreciate any help I can get to advocate for our children and allow youth beach volleyball tournaments to be allowed on San Diego beaches again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 5427. 5427. 5427, please press star six to unmute yourself. If we don't hear from you, oh.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hello, yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Sophia Rodriguez, and I'm a Health and Human Services worker under HSS and an SEIU 221 member. And I'm here to give support to my brothers and sisters in the union and my fellow coworkers to support hazard pay. And I just want to say, just not to reiterate what my other members are going to say, but I want to say that the presentation prior to this public comment is, really impacted me, especially the segment about mental health. Because county workers sacrifice a lot. We saw friends and family die. We survived COVID if we didn't catch it. We are also going through depression and anxiety, and I feel that we need to be recognized for our hard work. And yes, it's great that the COVID numbers are going down, vaccinations are going up. As a pregnant woman, I'm glad that I'm about to get it myself. But I just don't want our hard work to be swept under the rug and forgotten as we are emerging from this tunnel of COVID. So I just want to say, please support hazard pay. We're going through a lot. We're still going through a lot. And just support us. Show us the support that we have been giving our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 2767. 2767. 2767, please press star six to unmute yourself. Again, if we don't hear from you when your number is called, we will come back to you. Our next speaker is 8416. 8416.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Jenny Penalosa. I work in Environmental Health and Quality Department. I am in support of hazardous pay. As a field inspector, we interface with the public day to day. We ensure facilities are safe and clean for the public. I have family members who work in private industry wholesale food companies that deliver food to restaurants. They have minimal to no interaction with the public. They receive hazardous pay, which included a temporary raise and a bonus. Please support hazardous pay for all the hard-working individuals like myself that have been and continue to be on the frontline during this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 0173. 0173.
Hello, good morning. Hello, Chairperson Fletcher and supervisors. My name is Robert Ferreira, and I am a member of SEIU Local 221. I have worked at the county for three years now. I work for the Sheriff's Department at East Mesa Reentry Facility Commissary. I want to thank you for recognizing we deserve hazard pay as we are now in negotiations with labor management. Respectfully, what has initially been offered on the table is not enough. We demand more. We also need the county to pass proposals in writing, not supposals. County employees deserve hazard pay, and the county should make COVID pay retroactive to recognize the ongoing sacrifices we've made since the pandemic began. As an inmate service worker, I deliver commissary and supplies to all county jails. And when I say deliver, I mean deliver to every house, module, and cell located in our jails to inmates. Coming in close contact, I am constantly exposed to COVID-19. There is no perfect workplace while working in jails. I would deliver and find out the next day. My team and I could have came in close contact with positive inmates while the facility knew they were undergoing tests. Two of my close coworkers on my delivery crew caught COVID, and thankfully, a month later, they recovered. So I ask you to please not forget about the little guys of the county. Hazard pay for frontline workers recognizes the sacrifices we make to serve our communities, risking our own health and our family's health. It's time to respect us, protect us, and pay us. Please vote yes on this item, and thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 7805. 7805. 7805, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good morning, Chairman Fletcher and supervisors. My name is Tim Macedo, and I am a proud member of SEIU Local 221. I have worked for the county for four years. I work at the El Cajon Family Resource Center as a human services specialist, where my coworkers and I strive to ensure our community's basic economic and health needs are met during this pandemic. County employees also deserve to have their basic economic needs protected. Hazard pay for frontline workers recognizes the sacrifices we make on a daily basis to serve our community. The county should also cover the additional cost employees encounter working from home. As such, I urge you to vote yes to extend the provisions of the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 0459. 0459.
Good morning, Chairperson Fletcher and supervisors. My name is Scott Mandris, and I am a member of SEIU Local 221. I have worked at the county for five years. I work for the library to provide free resources, programming, and books. I urge you to use some of the $650 million from the American Rescue Plan Act to recognize the continuing sacrifices of county employers with employees with fair hazard pay. County library workers have been back at work since June of last year. They have continued to provide excellent customer service to patrons while trying to maintain a safe sense of comfort in their own daily life. They have had to deal with difficult safety situations with patrons and have done so with patience and decorum. It is time for the county to step up and invest in essential workers who have been on the COVID-19 frontlines for more than a year, helping the most vulnerable. Daily, we hear thanks for our flexibility and our perseverance, but a real thanks would be investing extra pay to our hard work and sacrifice during this global pandemic. Just like the county library focuses on the idea of equity for our communities, our efforts should be rewarded to reflect our own economic justice. It is time to respect us, protect us, and pay us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 1774. 1774.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Fletcher and supervisors. My name is Sarah Johnson. I've been at LVN with the county for almost 17 years and an SEIU 221 member. I've been doing my part to keep the county running smoothly and safely by caring for the most vulnerable patients at Edgemore Hospital in San Tito. Honestly, when I decided to be a nurse 20-plus years ago, I never dreamed of living or working through a pandemic, especially one as complicated as COVID-19. At Edgemore, nurses and I have been there for the most vulnerable population when others could not be there, acting as a family, a support system, calming fears, and redirecting negative behavior. We feel unrecognized as our health could be put in danger by being infected by COVID-19 while at work caring for others. Nurses and doctors have been celebrated publicly, but the same has not been done for us. Edgemore nurses have also taken care of COVID-19 patients with a lot less resources than the nurses in the hospitals. In the beginning, we had to worry if we would have enough supplies to get through the day. Using one surgical mask a day can be a very scary thing. The staff had to resort to buying their own masks, hand sanitizer, just to feel a little more secure. If we had not worked so tirelessly, the county would have spent a lot more money on the registry required to run Edgemore, and the outcome may not have been so good. A truly great nurse is hard to find, difficult to part with, and impossible to forget. If you would like to continue to provide quality, five-star care to the most vulnerable in the county, please remember this quote and show us how appreciated we are. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 6687. 6687.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Tristella Willis. I have been an employee for 19 years with the county, and I'm also the San Diego County Chapter President for our SEIU Local 221 union members. I'm here to speak in support for agenda item number five to authorize any other action necessary to address the COVID-19 pandemic. So far, you have approved and extended the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, something that continues to help employees, excuse me, something that continues to help the employees affected by COVID-19. But there is another very important action that needs to take place, approval of hazard pay. Like millions of hourly workers across the country, the county employees also are risking their lives and the health of their family members to perform a job now deemed essential by society. The employees are still struggling with issues of having the correct PPEs, increasing utility costs, upgrades of electronics that have to be compatible to the county's systems. The extreme sacrifices you are asking frontline workers to take require an immediate response to recognize the risks they are facing simply by just showing up to do their jobs. So please know that we are important too. We help keep this county running through this pandemic. So please respect us, protect us, and pay us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 2009. 2009.
Hi, Chairperson Fletcher and supervisors. My name is Kathy Griffey, Public Health Nurse Supervisor, and I am a member of SEIU 221. I've worked for the county for over 28 years as a public health nurse, senior public health nurse, and now public health nurse supervisor. And as my role as a public health nurse is to keep this public safe by providing up-to-date healthcare information and services and assist families in the navigation of complicated healthcare system. In May 2020, county workers advocated via call-in for the Board of Supervisors to address inadequate PPE and hazard pay for essential workers during COVID. On March 2021, the county began the negotiation process for hazard pay to be funded from the $647.5 million from the American Rescue Plan Act to recognize the service and sacrifices of county essential employees referred to as a premium pay. Essential county staff providing necessary services include public health, medical health, and healthcare staff in the field, in the clinics, and the county psychiatric hospital, as well as detention facilities, Polinsky Center caring for children awaiting placement, and Edgemore Nursing Facility. Many of the above venues have been using mandatory overtime to address inadequate staffing. It is important to note that staff providing necessary public health and medical services include caring for residents, clients, or patients refusing to wear or unable to wear masks. County workers continue to provide essential and necessary services in spite of the challenges of insufficient PPE at the beginning of the pandemic and continue to do so, providing immunizations and continued testing. Currently, the county has only provided supposals, no written proposals, to address hazard pay in the recent negotiations. Also to be noted, data obtained from Cronos may not be accurate as people coding telecommuting are actually doing face-to-face contact. In conclusion, as noted by the County of San Diego Code of Ethics, safe work environment is the health and safety of county employees is and always will be a top priority at the county. The county should prioritize the workers who have continued.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 7484. 7484.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Aaron Garrett, and I'm a member of SEI Local 221. I've worked for the county for almost 11 years. I currently work as a Protective Services Worker in the Extended Foster Care Program, or EFC. We are due to vote yes to extend provisions of the Family First Coronavirus Response Act and provide hazard pay to county workers. During the last year, as a worker in EFC, I've had to endure the following: death of a youth on my caseload due to drug overdose; near-death to a youth on my caseload due to them being assaulted with a deadly weapon; a youth on my caseload assaulting two other youths with a deadly weapon, seriously injuring them, and having to interact with the youth on a monthly basis; a youth attempting to overdose on medication several times, cutting on themselves, and expressing that they no longer want to live; taking youth to a psychiatric facility due to them being catatonic, not eating, and overall unable to care for themselves; having to interact with youth in person despite them potentially having COVID-19 as a few of the youth on my caseloads have contracted it. All these youths who I've described are brown or black. I have worked in residential services, emergency response, and at points, the Children's Center, and witnessed what our system does to youth and families. Our system breaks apart families and does not provide adequate, equitable care to them due to workers not having the time, nor provide minimal care to them because of time constraints and lack of equitable resources. It is time that the county finally acknowledged what the workers have endured, as well as secondary trauma due to working in a system that oppresses disproportionately families of color and families of low socioeconomic status. It is time for the workers to be paid proportionately for the hazardous environment they are thrown into so we can stop cycling through workers as exemplified by the rate of attrition. For too long, the agency has profited off of families of color and off the backs of workers who try with minimal resources to help a system that is broken and corrupted. This disconnect between those in power and the workers on the ground doing the work needs to be bridged so that we can be paid for the work we are doing and so that the families we serve receive the care, time, and level of compassion which they are entitled to, rather than the minimal time and resources they have received in this broken system. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is nine four zero eight, nine four zero eight.
Good morning, everyone. Hello, Chairperson Fletcher and Supervisors. My name is Mayrina Bwan and I am a member of SCIU Local 221. I have worked at the county for a little under three years under the Health and Human Services Agency, keeping the public safe currently by working with the community through the HIV Planning Group. During the COVID-19 crisis, I've recognized that the work that my fellow brothers and sisters have done to ensure the county continues to stay healthy, safe, and thriving by prioritizing the needs of the community during this time with a new focus due to the pandemic, while doing their best to maintain their current workload. With that being said, and in solidarity with my fellow colleagues that have spoken before me, county workers truly deserve hazard pay, especially for those that have been recruited to serve within the different sectors created by this public health crisis. I have the humble privilege to support the homeless sector bi-weekly by creating hygiene kits that are distributed to different community partners. While my assistance to them is voluntary, this is the kind of work my fellow brothers and sisters do day in and day out in addition to their primary tasks. I also have to highlight the work of the community health promotion workers who primarily support the community on a regular basis by working with several liberal partners and having to adjust their focus to highlight the growing concerns that have been added onto the communities at large. It's fair to say that I and my fellow workers are devoted to meet the needs of the community at whatever capacity we're asked to, and I hope the county sees the work that has been done thus far as an adequate reason to support their staff in this time of crisis by providing hazard pay. Thank you for your time and your support to ensure our communities continue to stand resilient in this time of need. We hope that you see that same value in your workers that continue to support the work you have all entrusted us with by being accountable to the needs of your staff.
Thank you. Our next speaker is three six four zero, three six four zero.
Yes, my name's David Garcia. I'm the President of SCIU Local 221. First, I'd like to ask if the clerk can pull up the PDF that we had sent the hazard pay petition?
Yes, it's on the screen now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So hello, Chairperson Fletcher, fellow supervisors, Madam CAO. You know, as you consider how to allocate the six hundred and fifty million from the American Rescue Plan Act, a priority must be funding to protect frontline workers and recognize our sacrifices. Today, we are presenting more than twenty-two hundred calling petitions calling for hazard pay for county employees. These are signed by county employees and many community supporters who recognize the sacrifices we've made to provide these essential services, such as public health, environmental health, mental health, and social workers who have continued these services during the entire pandemic to keep San Diego County safe and moving forward. You've heard, or you will hear, many heroic stories about county employees' sacrifices. I urge you to listen to them and make hazard pay a priority for these county employees. It's time to respect us, protect us, and pay us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is three eight four nine, three eight four nine.
Hello?
Hello.
Good morning, Supervisors. This is Leslie Mathland, a county librarian with SDCL, SCIU 221 steward and support services chair. Sunday marked the beginning of National Library Week. Today is library worker appreciation, a day for library staff, users, administrators, and friends groups to recognize the valuable contributions made by all library workers. Many may not realize the extent of how the library department has supported COVID response in San Diego County, so let's talk about those contributions now. Instead of storytime, lifelong learning, and circulation numbers, you'll see Flick infographics for that we typically celebrate this week. We've been stationed at COVID hotels, testing sites, Great Place, 221, CalFire mobile test and vaccination locations as disaster workers since May 2020. We've been sent to locations all over the county, some of us driving three hundred-plus miles to report to field offices, only to endure psychologically, emotionally, and physically draining work with little to no PPE. Other duties as assigned? Sure. Between COVID vacancy, pre-COVID vacancies, reassigned staff, and staff with children needing SML, we were left with very little manpower to reopen our buildings for business as usual. But we did it. We made it work with a shoestring budget and skeleton crew. We've been working the frontlines for a year. It's time to use some of the six hundred and fifty million dollars of federal aid to recognize the sacrifices we have made with hazard pay. This year, a tone deaf email from the CAO's office and a bag of candy simply will not cut it. It's time to respect us, protect us, and pay us with something more than lip service because we are worth more than a dollar and forty-two cents an hour, and county services would grind to a halt without us. Happy National Library Week.
Thank you. Our next speaker is four four eight eight, four four eight eight. Four four eight eight, please press star six to unmute yourself. And if we don't hear from you when your number is called, we will come back to you. We'll move on to five nine five two, five nine five two. Five nine five two. If not, we'll go to one, to six four four seven, six four four seven.
Yes, hi. This is Mike Lappel. I'm from Carlsbad. And I was just calling in because I understand that the CIF swim for high school students was canceled and we'd like to have that be reconsidered so they can, the kids can actually compete, you know, for swim. We think, and also I know my daughter does water polo as well, and I think they're just going to be starting games here real soon, and I wanted to make sure that that stays open. I think both of these sports are safe. COVID doesn't seem to be able to survive in chlorinated water. I have not heard of any transmissions in NCCA swimming or diving or anything like that, not aware of any of it, and water polo as well. We've actually had to go out of state and to other counties to have contact water polo games. And as far as like swim competitions, they're doing it in other states as well, so we want to make sure that we do it here in San Diego. All right? So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is six three five three, six three five three.
Hello, my name is Alicia Shirley, and I too am an SCIU Local 221 member, and I am a supervising office assistant in the probation department, where I represent professional staff that has worked day in and day out during this ongoing pandemic in offices that have not closed, in locked facilities, and those working in the field. I am also on the bargaining team for hazard pay. So far, we have not seen anything from Labor Relations beyond a low-ball proposal. We demand real proposals in writing that start from a place of fair compensation. We are asking for acknowledgement from you, our employers, that we have risked our lives to come to work for over a year now. We have done so in service of our community and to carry out the work you need us to do. County workers are your constituents. We are residents of San Diego County, and we live and work in the communities that you represent. We are public servants who have to deal with the very real risk to our lives in order to continue to work for the public good. Through retroactive hazard pay, you have an opportunity to show that you value not just our work, but our lives as well. It is time you respect us, protect us, and pay us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is six thousand, six zero zero zero. Six thousand, please press star six to unmute yourself. Six zero zero zero. If not, we'll move on to two five three one, two five three one.
Hello, I'm Joseph Weber from Ramona, California, and a representative of New California State. Number one, my Wilma Wooten's own numbers just presented to you proves we are not in a pandemic or an epidemic in San Diego County. There are other things killing our citizens by three or five times the rate of COVID. Even drug overdoses, as presented to you, are beating out COVID. Number two, a declaration of truth is a lawful notification which is being sent to all youth supervisors. Nathan Fletcher and Wilma Wooten already have theirs in hand. It states that you have violated the national constitution, specifically the Bill of Rights and multiple amendments, and the Bill of Rights of the California Constitution in multiple articles and sections. You all have taken the oath of office to support and uphold the national and state constitution and are constitutionally mandated to abide by that oath in the performance of your official duties. Any acts committed by you acting as elected supervisors of San Diego County either support and uphold the constitutions, national, and state, or oppose and violate them, you have no constitutional authority or any other form of valid lawful authority to oppose and violate the very documents to which you swore or affirmed your oath and under which you were delegated by the people the limited authority to conduct the duties of your office. However, despite the above stated factual lawful positions, your unconstitutional actions are described throughout my declaration of truth clearly demonstrate how you have violated the national and state constitution, your oath of office, and acted against the public good by violating the public trust and committing sedition and insurrection. When you pursue to your oath, uphold unconstitutional orders issued by an unconstitutional entity acting as government-
Your time is up.
You perjure-
Our next speaker is seven eight seven two, seven eight seven two. Seven eight seven two, please press star six to unmute yourself. If not, we'll move on to one zero six nine, one zero six nine.
Hi, good morning. This is Jeff Holman. I'm a La Jolla resident and a parent of a high school swimmer. I was calling also about the cancellation of the CIF San Diego Championship Swim Meet. That was done at the direction of County Health Office. CIF San Diego has said they were informed that they were not authorized to hold swim meets with more than four teams. However, I believe this is not grounded within the state's health guidelines, and furthermore, it's actually discriminatory. Back in February, there was a collegiate championship swim meet held in California up in San Luis Obispo that had over a hundred swimmers and seven teams.
Oh, I think this one's muted. Are you still with us? You may be muted on your end, so.
Yes, hi. I think I'm back on now. Did you catch the first part of that, or was I unmuted for the whole thing?
No, we caught the first part of it. There was a brief moment where you were muted.
Okay, great. Thank you. As far as that regulation or that decision by the county to not allow swim meets with more than four teams, it's happened throughout the state. It's even happened in San Diego County for swim clubs. They have regularly held meets with twenty to thirty swim teams, hundreds of swimmers in attendance. Furthermore, CIF Southern Section, which includes Riverside County, San Bernardino, Orange Counties, they will be having a championship swim meet in May. It's, I don't really understand where this four-team idea came from, but it's certainly not grounded within the state health code. It's not in the guidance, it's not in the guidelines. Swimming has been accepted by the state from a maximum on the number of teams participating. I urge the county to look at this as a discriminatory policy. It's going to bring up a lawsuit. Parents are already in process of speaking with law firms, the same law firm that sued the state and won. We don't want to go through with this. We don't want to waste our money. We don't want the county wasting its money. So we urge you to take a look at this. Hopefully, you can act quickly so that swimmers have time to prepare and have a high school sectional championship meet. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll circle back to the callers whose numbers we had previously called. So we have four four eight eight, four four eight eight. Again, when you hear your number, please press star six to unmute yourself, and please state your name for the record when you begin. So we have four four eight eight, five nine five two, five nine five two.
Hi there. Thank you so much for taking my call. It's a beautiful day out in San Diego. My name is Cynthia Di Maria. You know, I don't even know where to begin, you guys. I just wanted to talk from my heart. You know, I've listened to the meetings and I'm hearing a very, very, very pro-hardcore vax stance on getting rid of this apparently flu that's disappeared in the last year that's got a ninety-nine percent survival rate. So my question, really my standing question is going to be, are you, being our public servants and should be backing the constitution, are you going to back a forced vaccine passport that would pretty much discriminate a lot of people that, first of all, don't want it, don't need it? And what everybody's, you know, it doesn't matter the view on what someone thinks as far as pro or anti. It's just pro-medical freedom. It's my body, my right, my choice. I don't know where all those people are right now. But, you know, I'm looking at this thinking, so much sadness has happened, people losing their businesses. I know you've heard it all, you know, young kids have committed suicides, criminals have been released, while business owners resale. Criminals are giving stimulus checks. You know, fear is the real pandemic. You know, it's been, it's been over a year and everyone's tired of it, and I'm looking at it thinking, wow, I thought we were smart people, but with the premise of a vaccine passport, it means we've learned squat from history, nothing. This vaccine that had zero testing, there's been many people that have been injured and have died from it. And for the moms out there that are pregnant, please don't. You're going to risk miscarriage. Hey, these are the things mainstream media, they're not putting out there. So I'm just praying that you guys have the heart to go against this tyranny. Stand for common sense, please, and freedom, and respect our constitution because the majority of us, we can't handle, we can't handle the assininity anymore. It's horrible what this country has come to over a flu. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is six thousand, six zero zero zero. Again, please press star six to unmute yourself when we call your number.
This is Dean Lapata. I would also like to know what the board's position is about vaccine passports. When we start forcing medical procedures on people, we're going down a dangerous road because we could have additional medical procedures and more and more things that people are forced or coerced to have. So I'd also like to know your position on that. The other thing that I haven't heard much about is the environmental impact from these made-in-China masks that people are throwing down on the ground. There is a huge amount of waste from these masks, and we should do things to encourage people not to pollute San Diego with these masks. and we should do things to encourage people not to pollute San Diego with these masks. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is four, four, eight, eight. Four, four, eight, eight. Again, please press star six.
Hello?
Hello.
Good morning. Hello, Chairperson Fletcher and supervisors. My name is Lori Hanson and I'm a member of SDIU Local 221 and steward. I've worked for the county for almost 20 years. I work at the North Inland Livewell Center as a human services specialist. We urge you to use some of the 650 million from the American Rescue Plan Act to recognize county employees with fair hazard pay. Every day, workers continue to providing vital services to San Diego County residents who need these services to survive. We do this at the risk of our own health and the health of our families, husbands, wives, children, and aging parents who a lot of us take care of. We are devoted to our jobs and the residents we serve. Hazard pay recognizes our hard work and sacrifice as well as additional costs for those working from home during this crisis. It's time to respect us, protect us, and pay us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is seven eight, seven two. Seven eight, seven two.
Hello, my name is Allison Hartman. I am calling on behalf of Reopen San Diego, a group of concerned citizens and business owners. My concern with the virus is that no state of emergency in San Diego. There's not been one proven. And according to the constitution, the California constitution specifically states that there needs to be a state of emergency as defined by our medical services being overwhelmed. There is no such overwhelming of our emergency medical services. Therefore, all restrictions are unlawful and violate the California constitution and thus the United States constitution. This virus is not an excuse to take away people's civil liberties. This virus is not an excuse for you to violate your oath to the California constitution and your oath to the United States constitution. We demand to see either proof that there is a state of emergency or we demand all restrictions be lifted off all citizens and businesses. My group is reopen San Diego. We are at reopensd.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is two, six, three, nine. Two, six, three, nine. If you'd like to address the board on item five, please press star six.
Good afternoon, am I audible?
Yes, hello.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairperson Fletcher and supervisors. My name is Andy Combo and I am a member of SDIU Local 221. I've worked for the county probation department 16 years this month. I'd like to address the ongoing issue of hazard pay. We're at the year mark now with this pandemic and we county employees have done our best as essential workers to adapt and keep things going as best we can. Toward this end, a few points for your consideration are as follows. The county should provide hazard pay for its valued employees, making it retroactive to when the pandemic started a year ago. Between the rainy day fund and ongoing federal funds, there is ample money for this. Hazard pay keeps the public safer by incentivizing experienced workers, employees, that is to say, who have loyally and happily served throughout this pandemic. Hazard pay also recognizes our hard work and sacrifices by offsetting additional costs incurred by employees who work from home, including childcare and other expenses. Respectfully, we have gone above and beyond during this pandemic to ensure that the county daily operations have been functional as much as was possible. It is time to return our efforts by showing that you respect, protect, and will pay for what we are due. All we're asking for is what many other public sector workers are already getting. We urge you to vote yes on the hazard pay proposal, item five, I believe it's called today. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration regarding this ongoing issue.
Thank you. And that concludes public testimony on this item. Chair Fletcher.
Thank you to, thank you to all the speakers who called in today. I'm going to go to my colleagues. I think we'll start our discussion. I'm not sure that we will conclude this item by 12:30. We need to break at 12:30. But let's certainly begin. Again, we have a number of recommendations in the COVID item that is before us to consider. And then just to reiterate, the two primary things that we need to make sure that we do is a discussion around the framework for the ARPA funding. Again, we're not allocating the money, we're not appropriating the money. We're just taking an initial step to give staff some direction about what they should flush out and work on to begin bringing back to us for individual appropriations. And then, of course, deciding on the three tiers around the business stimulus grants along with anything else that my colleagues would like to discuss around this item. So let me open it up. I saw Supervisor Anderson, you had your hand up, but then you pulled it down, so.
I'm still interested in speaking. I just figured I better pull it down while I think of it. I'd be up there for a week. Thank you for calling on me. I, there were a couple of questions I had in observances. First, when we did the survey, and I'm grateful for staff for doing it, it was a lot of work. I was on the call with them. But much to my surprise, a lot, a good portion of my district doesn't have broadband. So they may not have known about it or participated in it. And yet, these are the areas where we have food deserts, we have economic disadvantages, where we have fewer businesses. And so when you think in terms of who gains most by being at the table, it's the people in most need. So I don't know how we could have overcome that, but that was a bit of a concern to me. And if I thought of it before, I would have suggested to staff to go further and reach further into it. The second issue is, we're talking frequently in terms of people of color in other terms, but I did a little research because my district is a little unique. And I was surprised to learn that many Southwest Asians, Middle Eastern, and Northern African descent frequently are encouraged to check white on the box for the census. And same with Lebanese, Egyptian are also, there's been several studies showing that they're overwhelmingly checking white. So when we look at this moving forward, I would like to have some sort of definition and so that I know that the people in need in my district are covered. The second part is, we have 40 million blocked out. And while I believe our county employees are deserving and wonderful people, I represent people who are woefully in worse shape than our employees financially. So I'd like for the staff, when they come back, to have an alternate plan and anticipate that there might not be a fourth vote for that provision. And I'd like for them to look at, instead of the bonus pay, I'd like for them to look at the rental assistance. I know that we have 107 million, but I'm not sure that that is close to the need that's out there. And every one of these people that are moving into their cars, we're going to have to assist in a much worse position than if we were to assist them out and keep them in their home. And as we look at that, I'd like to also consider that 40 million towards utilities. It doesn't serve us if those folks stay with the rent, but they have no heat or water. Is it the last thing, well, not last, but childcare subsidies, homeless services, mental health are all issues too that that 40 million could be applied to. And I'd like to have that as part of the framework coming back to us. Otherwise, we're going to have this money come in, there's not going to be a fourth vote. I've been very clear that I'm not going to vote for it, not while I represent people whose household income is under $60,000 and they have had no work because the restaurant where they worked didn't need busboys, cooks, or waiters. And the other, let's see, what else do I have here? No, I guess that's it. I think we've covered all my notes.
So Supervisor, one thing, and I think as we go through everyone, you know, we'll kind of get everyone's thoughts maybe on the framework along with the business allocation. We had the three tiers that were shared. But I think as we make, I appreciate what you did in terms of saying, this is what I think should be increased and this is where I think it should come from. And I think that we all need to do that when we allocate. And then we'll see if we can kind of come to some general consensus. I don't know that we'll get all five agreeing, but at least some generals. So your suggestion Supervisor Anderson is to take the 40 million from hazard pay and you want to put that into rental assistance, utility assistance, and what else?
Childcare, homeless, and mental health.
Okay, so that's five.
And I don't know how we determine.
How do you want to break that 40 up? Homeless and mental health? How much of the 40 would you put in each of those?
I would leave it to staff to figure.
No, it's not, Supervisor. We determine the buckets.
I'm sorry?
The staff will figure out the specifics of how we do it. We determine what the buckets are. So if you take the 40 million from hazard pay, so you just want to break it five ways?
We could do that. The problem I have is some of these folks didn't have broadband, didn't participate. So I'm not sure. I suspect that if we contact SDG&E, they probably have a list of all the people that are behind on their electric bill and gas bill in all our districts. So that number can probably be very easily achieved. So I don't know that it needs that much more. I want to give the staff a little more flexibility to drill down a little deeper because this is just a framework. But I do want to have an alternate plan so we don't lose time if we don't get to the fourth vote.
Fair enough. Okay, perfect. I think I've got your suggestions there. Do you have a preference on the business allocation on the tiers between one, two, and three?
So again, when I looked at that, my concern is that definition, I think we need to drill down further. I prefer one and two at this time. But I don't know, when we think in terms of definitions, you know, I have Middle Eastern folks in my district. Are they listed as white or are they listed as people of color? If we're strictly thinking in terms of Hispanics and blacks, oh, that leaves out many of the poor in my district that should be in this sphere of influence. So I'd like to have more information on it, but I actually have a couple of newspaper articles and documentation showing that Asians, Middle Easterns, and North Africans were encouraged in the last census to mark white. And how is that going to translate when we're looking at that allocation? So I don't know where we are on that.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay. All right. Thank you Supervisor Anderson. I see Supervisor Lawson Reamer, their hand up.
Great, thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to thank everyone who took the time to testify because obviously this is really a really important issue. Over the last few weeks, I've spoken with constituents and stakeholders in my district. And I want to flag a couple of things for consideration that I want to include in this framework. And I will, to Chair Fletcher's point, also identify a few places I think we could have seen some decreases. In my conversations, I've identified the need to ensure both renters who are facing eviction and unaccompanied minors have the ability to adequately represent themselves in court in moments of dire straits. While there are a number of renter protections in place, we do know that some individuals continue to be evicted. And one of the biggest challenges these folks face is lack of legal counsel. Similarly, it was reported last night at NBC7 that many of the youth currently in the convention center will not have the opportunity of lead a legal counsel in their cases. It is challenging enough for adults who lack legal counsel, but it is especially concerning for children without any guidance. Community members seeking asylum or facing deportation throughout San Diego have no access to legal counsel to protect their constitutional rights. So after much consideration, I would like to ensure that these two key populations have access to legal counsel. This is tenants facing eviction and our immigrant community facing deportation. Counsel requires funding. Thus, I would like to allocate some of these dollars to these critical needs that still impact our community during this pandemic. At the same time, it's clear that we need to do a better job of collecting evidence on the data and outcomes associated with our services in our community so we can continue to improve the services and gather disaggregated data, see which populations are most impacted and are most in need of additional support. So pending guidance from the federal government as well as confirmation of the amount that we will be receiving, I would propose that I amend the framework as follows. I would like to add to the legal services, add a bucket for legal services for these two groups I mentioned of 25 million and add 8 million for evidence and evaluation and data collection. And then in terms of decreases, I would be, I think there's a lot of conversation to be had, but you know, I would look at the homeless services to decrease by 10 million because that's a place we already have a significant commitment. I decrease by 10 million the food and decrease this direct stimulus payments by 13 million, which would raise 33 million. But I do want to say I'm not particularly tied to those decreases. I think I'm quite flexible as to where the money would come from. But my primary concern is to ensure that we do have, are expanding access to counsel and legal services and that we're actually gathering the data that we need to assess whether these programs are working and who's getting services and what's actually being impactful in our community. So those are my priorities in this regard. So I think if we allocate a portion of funds to counsel or address our urgent needs in a more holistic way. I also would like to acknowledge the incredible service and sacrifice of our county workers during this pandemic and reiterate my support for $40 million in hazard pay as currently outlined in the framework. So Chair Fletcher, would it be helpful if, at the same time, I also discuss the options under the stimulus program?
That'd be great.
Great. So it's a, that one is, I think, an interesting question about, you know, what is going to be? It's not only, in my mind, it's not really only a question of what kind of framework makes them more sense conceptually. It's also a question of what can be administered as efficiently and quickly as possible to get the funds out the door to our businesses that need it most. And sometimes there's a balance to be struck between, you know, the program that is conceptually thoughtful and looks good on paper, but the fact that you really just need to get the money out the door to folks in need. So I think that the approach that best strikes that balance, in my view, is definitely approach number two that allows, you know, pretty significant flexibility to move quickly, but also make sure that we're taking into account equity. And I think obviously there's two different ways of thinking about equity. I think both that have been outlined by county staff. I think they're both valid. You know, in my district, the biggest concern is making sure we're prioritizing the businesses that have been most significantly impacted by COVID and most prioritizing the businesses whose sectors, the sectors that have been most impacted by COVID. But I certainly acknowledge that in other districts, there would be, the healthy places and that index might be a more appropriate way of thinking about equity. So I think I strongly support option two. I think it strikes the right balance between being efficient to get funds out the door, making sure we're taking into account equity and acknowledging that there's really two ways of thinking about and applying an equity lens, one, both of which have been identified by county staff. And it gives us the ability to apply that lens as appropriate in our various districts because clearly the needs are different in our different districts. Our county is extremely diverse. I'm happy to talk more about that second one as well.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Lawson Reamer. Let's go next to either Supervisor Vargas or Supervisor Vargas. I see your hand up.
Oh, yeah. I was trying to make sure that I raised my hand fast enough. But anyway, thank you, everyone. Thank you for your feedback and comments, too. And thank you also to county staff for the thorough presentation. I know that we've asked a lot of questions, my staff has and myself. And I do want to say that I really appreciate the opportunity to have community workshops. And although I agree with Supervisor Joel Anderson about many of our communities having the digital divide, I think one of the things that we've done is reached out and had a lot of community meetings with different groups and organizations, particularly that, you know, are connected to some of our community folks on the ground. And so with that, I want to say that I will start off by saying that I do support hazard pay for our county employees. I think so many of them have been on the front lines doing the tough work during this challenging time. And the county really has been the safety net for so many folks who otherwise would not have, would not be in the situation that we are in right now. And saying that, I do know that many members, especially in my district, continue to be impacted because of the impact of COVID-19. And so I appreciate it that the actual framework and the recommendations really do take into account the priorities that many really do take into account the priorities that many of our, of those that are in need have requested, you know, have identified as a priority, including rental assistance, food assistance. I really, I really do think the idea of having direct stimulus payments is a really big deal for our communities and childcare subsidies as well, small business stimulus payments. And I'll talk a little bit about that as well. And when I look at the draft framework for the use of the American Rescue Plan, I can see that we actually have taken all this information into account. So I understand that there is some questions around the food assistance. That continues to be a top priority for me. I mean, I've heard from my communities during the workshops, but also when they're waiting in line for a long time at our food banks and waiting for additional assistance, you know, many of the folks do not have jobs right now. And so this is the only way they are able to access any food. And although the great place to work is not, you know, it's not a perfect program. We still, we still have a lot of work to do in terms of outreach. You know, for my district, this really plays number one on the poll because a lot of folks are just really hurting right now because, you know, we have the largest levels of unemployment in the county in places like, you know, the Sherman area, the Barrio Logan area. And so this pandemic has really hit an estimated, you know, four hundred and forty-three thousand, one in seven people in San Diego County with food insecurities. And so, I mean, it actually has grown since 2017, I guess I should say. And so I think the food bank is up to like six hundred thousand people per month right now. So there's, I would like to really advocate for us to continue to allocate those resources there because there is great need. And I think the framework designates eighty-seven million for food assistance. And out of that, twenty million will go towards food banks, food pantries and community gardens. And sixty-seven million will support the Great Blades program. And so I really want to emphasize that that's a really important one for me. They also, the folks in our communities also express a great interest in the county offering the direct payment to those impacted by the pandemic. And so I'm really pleased to see that you have forty million that is being awarded for this purpose. The fact that there was so much interest for this kind of direct cash assistance demonstrates to me that while there may be programs and services that are being offered to cover various needs, the truth is that not every need might be met by those programs. And so I think there's something about how we have sort of shamed people who are in poverty or poverty levels, right? So we're going to tell you what you need versus let's provide people with direct payment stimulus so that they can decide what it is that they want and have them have the flexibility to use those funds for what they feel are critical needs in their area. And so I really appreciate county staff really addressing this. And so I have been meeting also with superintendent, school board members in my district, and they've expressed concerns regarding youth and mental health services. So I a hundred percent behind the allocation of the thirty million to be utilized for youth services, suicide prevention, school-based programs, a mother things. And then the ten million allocated to transportation vouchers for seniors and students. I will say that here, I'm going to be using my former trustee hat and say that I want to make sure that when we're looking at this data, that we really talk about our students to also include college students, right? So we need to make sure that, I would like us to include up to folks who are up to twenty-four year olds to be included as eligible for these funds. You know, a lot of our students in our community colleges really suffer because a lot of people think that transportation is subsidized, but it's not really. And so that's an important one for me. And then in terms of the thirty million for small business grants, I really want to thank the county staff for thinking outside the box. We've talked a lot about making sure that we're looking at need. And what does an equitable distribution of funds look like? And I think, you know, I think using these models where we're looking at the health index, census tracts, needs, I mean, really looking at it from different perspectives, plus understanding that business sectors who have been affected, you know, it's not that simple, right? And so in my district, I have a lot of folks that are part of the informal sector and I want to figure out how they can be part of that. So they're not captured through the formal business data. So I'm talking about our palieteros, our street vendors that have been highly impacted by the pandemic. And so for me, what I would like to see is option two, which requires twenty percent of the funding allocated for each of the district to be allocated through the equity lens. And I understand my colleagues' concerns about ethnicity, but it's beyond that, right? It's really about healthy place in this business sectors and really modeling for what the need is in each of our communities. And so there is a lot more need. But overall, I think that this proposed framework is investing in those that really, you know, need it, which is support working families, our business communities as well, and it really offers county response. So I do have a few clarifying questions regarding some of the proposed recommendations. So the one hundred and twenty-three million allocation, when do we anticipate that that work grant for the ELC allocation will be completed? That would be one question we can ask that later, right, the staff can. And then the acceptance of the REACH grant, I understand that this funding will be utilized to support adult COVID-19 and influenza vaccine coverage for ethnic and racial groups. And so I wanted to see if additionally, this funding will focus in some of the zip codes that fall under the healthy place index. And so I can ask those questions directly from the county as we're moving forward from the staff. But I wanted to just bring that up. But I am happy to support the requested recommendations that the staff has proposed.
Thank you. Thank you Vice Chair Vargas. Supervisor Desmond, we're at twelve-thirty. It's up to you. We're happy to just do your comments on this now and then we'll come back after the break and try to try and outline what we think can pass to move us forward. Or if you'd like to go first after the break, we can do that. It's entirely your preference.
I can be fairly short and brief, I think, here. I do have a question. I don't know if Gary Johnson's available because we have a few people comment on CIF. Is Gary available? If not, if you could get him and then I can, I'll keep going here.
He's here on Zoom, Supervisor Desmond.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank the staff for the great job, for the vaccine rollout, for, you know, the fact that our numbers are going down. You know, this is very indicative of, you know, all the hard work that has gone into fighting this virus and getting people healthy or keeping people healthy. But on the CIF question, Gary, I know it's a different entity and we don't really have jurisdiction over them. But, you know, I wanted to ask you about our reopening team. If these competitions, if they put in, you know, programs or opening plans that can be accepted and if they can safely take place, do you have a comment on that from what we heard today?
Yeah Supervisor, and good afternoon, I think we're afternoon, yeah, everyone. Gary Johnston, the lead here for county reopening. You know, the bottom line upfront is yes. I mean, we have the ability to approve such things and actually execute safely such events, Supervisor. I think what needs to be communicated is that it requires a very high level of planning rigor. So in particular with the CIF, San Diego Section Swim Championship, I think one thing that was taken a wee bit out of context is that we all know how closely we have been on our case rates, trying to hold on so to make sure that we would accelerate into less restrictive tier. Doing that, obviously, we had to monitor some restrictions. The CDPH guidance specifically says nothing beyond two teams when it comes to competitive play. However, that your local health department can basically kind of waive that requirement. So I've been working with my team very, very closely with the CIF San Diego. The commissioner, Joe Hines, has been incredible with his team. We're almost on a conversation on a daily basis. And it was through them that they came to us saying, hey, can we do quad level meets or multiple team events for some of our school athletics? The answer was yes. Now figure out how we get there. So what was proposed is that they would try to come up with a minimum requirement to have a successful season. How many teams would that be at one venue? And consistently, it came out to be four teams or quad meets. So with that, we helped them develop a framework. With that framework, we presented that to the public health officer, in which time she approved those quad meets. And we did that for cross-country swim and dive, and we did that recently for track and field. I think what was misled or was confused is the fact that that was it. You couldn't go beyond that. And since then Supervisor Desmond, we have met with the CIF and other key stakeholders as late as yesterday to basically work out a potential plan to conduct such a championship. It's going to require a great deal of rigor, given the number of potential teams. You're looking at an excess of thirty teams for both Division One and Division Two schools to come together at one venue. But bottom line, we are looking and working with all the key stakeholders on this. I hope to see a draft plan. If that plan can meet all the CDPH guidelines for a safe execution, we'll present that plan to our public health officer for a decision. I hope that answers the question, sir. If not, please come back to me.
Oh, very. I appreciate it. I'm glad that you're working very hard and diligently on trying to get them so that they can have these safe competitions. So thank you very much for your efforts and hopefully, you know, I'd really like to see these get back open again. And I think people are willing to do the right things and be safe. And then I'd just like to also ask, Gary, thank you very much. That at a future meeting, you know, we've also heard from many of the people that, about the state of emergency. Are we still in an emergency or not? You know, I'd like to ask at our next board meeting that we have, you know, what are the triggers that keep us in a state of emergency? What is it that we're looking for, you know, what turns the corner that we're no longer in the state of emergency? What happens if we do? Do we lose out on money? I guess there's a lot of people that call in with that particular concern and I don't know enough about it to say yea or nay, we should or should not be out of it. So if we could have that at the future board meeting, I would appreciate that. The COVID presentation would be great. On the framework, briefly on the framework, you know, the broadband, I'm glad Supervisor Anderson brought that up on the broadband issue. You know, there's ten million dollars in the infrastructure, out of the infrastructure for broadband. I'd like to see that twenty million. You know, that's one of the biggest complaints I hear from the unincorporated area, especially from kids, you know, been homeschooled or not homeschooled, but distance learning. The school sends them home with laptops or iPads and they can't connect or they have very, very slow broadband or they can't get on board. So I'd love to see another ten million dollars going into the broadband, so total of twenty million. I'm glad to see how it's distributed in other areas. If you had to pull ten million from some other place, I know homeless services is huge, but under homeless services, you've also got acquisitions of hotels, shelters, housing and and basically acquisition of hotels, shelters and housing. And under infrastructure, you also have acquisition of hotels and for emergency shelter and things like that. So if that money can be combined somehow to get twenty million into infrastructure, that'd be very much appreciated. And the premium pay for essential workers, I kind of see the writing on the wall here. And even though I don't completely agree and I thank all of our county workers for all they've done, they've made sacrifices, but so have the people that haven't worked for over a year and their industries have been devastated. And so that's what I'm, you know, I have problems getting over is all these other businesses that just, just people that just have not had jobs. However, I can see the writing on the wall. I can see how the vote's going to be going. And potentially, if I support this, the money would be coming out of the federal government's dime. If we don't support it today, if it doesn't get the four votes, then it's going to be coming out of our general fund, probably in a budget item. So I may be supporting this after I hear from other colleagues on this, on the hazard pay, only because it's becoming, it would be coming out of the federal bucket of money as opposed to our general fund. So I would like to see extra dollars going towards the broadband that doubling. And the equity allocation and criteria options, certainly I would like option one, but I think option two is also a fair option. So either one or two would be my preference for those allocations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Desmond. And just to clarify Supervisor, you're right in your thinking and approach to the hazard pay. Today is just a three-vote item on the framework. It's not allocating any money. Each of these items will come back, but you are correct when they come back. Each of these will be an individual four-vote item. But doing hazard pay via the budget process would only be a three-vote item. And so you are absolutely correct that a four-vote, when it comes back, not today, but a four-vote when it comes back, would take these funds out of the federal funds, out of the ARPA funds. Or there would be an option for the board to consider, which would be a three-vote as a part of the budget, which would come out of the budget. So you're a hundred percent right on your take. Today is just a framework. We're not allocating, we're not appropriating them, but your overall assessment is spot on. It's just that's not the step we're taking today.
And I'm hoping to get, and thank you for that acknowledgement. And I'm hoping out of that, I guess, a potential act of working together that we can get some more broadband dollars.
I appreciate that. Okay, so it is, it's twelve forty. We're going to go ahead and break. When we reconvene, I'll share a couple of thoughts and then we'll see. Now, just during the lunch break, let's all take into account, there's a lot of additive things and some of the subtractive things are in things that were really important to board members. So we're going to do our very best to try and bring this to a framework. But I want to reiterate, it's just a framework. We have a lot of federal guidelines coming out that'll provide clarification. We potentially have more state funding. There's other sources coming in. And so in the coming months, we have a considerable amount of time to work and massage. And so if we don't get it exactly where everyone wants it, doesn't mean it's not final. It's just a framework that kind of gives staff some direction to work and come back. So with that, we will recess until two PM and then we will reconvene at that point where we will finish Agenda Item Five. Then we will go to Agenda Item Nineteen. After Agenda Item Nineteen, we will work through everything else on our docket today in sequential order, starting with number one. Thank you all and have a great lunch.